Sounds good. All right. Corvallis School Board Meeting is called to order for January 7, 2021. And this is our first board meeting for the year. So exciting. And I want to acknowledge and thank our community members who are joining us. First, our item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all. Let the record show that we have all our board members, with the exception of Director Tina Baker, who couldn't join us today due to emergency reasons. And also, I want to acknowledge that due to social distancing protocols and the distance connection, some of our board members will not be able to join us through the camera all the time. So they will be participating through audio and they might connect over the camera if they could. Today, we do, it is a special meeting, which means the public comments period will not be here. However, we value public input and we appreciate it. We ask, we ask you to participate through public comments over email by emailing the board or by phone or register for the public comments period for the next meeting, next Thursday. When you go to meet the board, you will be able to find the information related to how to participate in public comments period. Also, if you go to Corvallis School Board, meet the board, you'll find the agenda and the packets. For those who are watching, we will be referring to so many documents. So I encourage those who are watching to go to the packets and navigate through the documents we have. Today, in our agenda, we have a work session with Promise Scholarship related to racial equity. And also, we do have on the agenda after that a consolidated action regarding CHS solar, solar panels and the playground equipment. And on the agenda topic, I see Director Adams needs to be recognized. For what reason you want to be recognized?
Thank you. I would, I'd like to move that, we move item number five, Consolidated Action, to the front of the agenda to allow staff to get home at a reasonable time because we'll, the board will be discussing equity and, and we will be here probably at a late hour.
Thank you. Without objection. So now we will have the first item on the agenda is the Consolidated Action. So do any of our board member have a question or want to pull out? Well, a question about any of the items, CHS solar panel or playground equipment. And as a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Vince?
So I would just, well, really a comment and a request. The first comment is just the, the solar project at CHS is just immensely exciting and members of the community are very excited about this project. And because sustainability is a front and center priority for me as a board member, I just really appreciate the district's emphasis and Wenahaw's emphasis on ensuring sustainability is front and center in the bond, bond work. So thank you very much. And you guys have done a great job of keeping the board educated on this particular project. So I don't have any questions. I just, I just wanted to applaud this work. The other is a request, you know, I have to confess, you know, when I worked at OSU, I would go to League Oregon Cities Conference or I would go to Association of Oregon Counties Conference. And there were these, these playground equipment vendors and I was loved looking through the catalogs. And sometime they would actually give me the catalog and I would take them home. My kids would literally shop for playground equipment. It was just amazing thing. Is there any way that the board can get any renderings or design drawings? Or just something around, or can you point us to somewhere on the internet where those drawings are at about what this playground equipment will look like?
I have the images up if you're interested, if, if I can show them. I don't know if that's feasible in this medium here.
Absolutely. I believe maybe if Lizzie could give you a co-host or sharing authority ability. And if you don't mind, Vince, I'll add to his suggestion that if you could speak to any accessibility and equity features or elements to the design while you show us the renderings, that's something I am personally curious about as well.
Kim, would you narrate while I, while I do the slides? You?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And do I need to do anything to become the presenter?
You should be able now to click on share screen and choose the.
Got it. Okay, are you seeing the image?
Yeah, we are. This is great.
Okay, this is the Husky one. Excuse me, did I say the wrong one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Thank you, Kim. And I will scroll through it. There's a few different views of, of this particular layout.
So one of the things that has occurred here is that we really wanted to make sure that we had enough play equipment. We have one playground, some of our elementary schools have more than one playground, dividing primary and intermediate. And so we felt it important to make sure that we had enough features that kids could spread out and have plenty of physical options. And so, um, let's go back to one of the other views and start there. So the, the, this item here, yes, can you point to the, is it called the glider? And that is a feature, that's one of the, the accessibility features. So this is, can be accessed from a ramp. So it can support a student who has ambulatory differences. It could have supported wheelchair, a walker, and it is actually a, an item that a ton of kids can get on. So kids will crowd on that, they can stand on the outside there where you see the ledge and they can get on the inside also, and it rocks back and forth. And it's, it's body powered, right? So the students rock it and it's, it's a pretty fun feature. And we went with a lot of different options. We got feedback from students about what they dreamed about for their playground and tried to, Dr. Quemps actually synthesized that feedback and made sure that we got some features that were really identified by students. So this area is not as natural looking, like it's not logs and rocks. But keep in mind that we've got this other area that, that can be accessed. It gives kids an opportunity to spread out even further. And if you can click to the boulder, so this boulder is also accessible. It has a roll up area where we could, this could be an area for eating lunch. It could be an area to roll up and talk with your friends or climb on. And we've also got the logs depicted in the background. Um, not every student wants to play the same. So this gives some area for running on the tiles. We selected the tiles over engineered wood fiber. What we hear at our other elementary schools is that the engineered wood fiber walks away and into the classroom regularly. And staff are continually having to break the engineered wood fibers back into place. So we're going with this fall protection tile for more usability and less maintenance. We also, as a district, spent a lot of money filling up our fall protection annually. So the life, this is a little bit more expensive on the installation, but over the life of it is actually going to be cheaper. Okay, you want to look at Husky? So Husky has a more tree inspired design. And again, we featured the glider so that we'd have that same accessible option. And it's got a lot of the same features, just a different color. And we've got the boulder right on the same tiled surface, but there's a little bit less flexibility on the Hoover site, but we still managed to get some space. We, we will have lots of different options. The twirly bars are often a highlight. So you'll see those horizontal bars for, for doing flips, lots of swings. So we made sure to incorporate swings. And, but I think, are there any questions? I'm not sure what else. Ryan?
One thing I would add is just, as you saw in the write-up, that this, we are using some contingency funds to do this. We had an initial design and it just didn't necessarily feel to us like there was enough, enough available play structure. So that's why we made that recommendation and are bringing this forward to you because it feels to me like it actually fills, fills the playground, which is oftentimes something that gets valued engineered out of new schools because of cost. And, and it's sort of near the end of the project and that just didn't feel, feel right to me as a principal at a new, fairly new school that had to fundraise for additional play equipment. We just wanted to get it done right and get it done at the beginning. So I'm, I'm excited about it. I really feel like that was a good decision that we made.
I also want to point out how much our playgrounds are used by the community after hours also. And so it, we really have emphasized our schools as a community have. And I think this just reinforces that and supports that value.
Beautiful. Any other questions from board members? Therese, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Sammy. My question is, so related to the cost, I don't have the original numbers in front of me, but how much more are we investing in these structures than what we originally anticipated?
At Husky, it's about 129,000 and at Lincoln, it's 140,000. And those contingency dollars that were mentioned are coming out of the existing project budget. So we're not, we're not increasing the overall project budgets to fund these.
Okay, so is it displacing something else in the existing project? Or is it just that? Okay, great. And so, and then the, the ground, the covering, sorry, the tiles as opposed to the wood. I totally agree with that. Those others are, they are a pain, they get in everything. What's the cost difference between using the tiles versus the, you know, the other, for the, for the, for the floor, for the ground?
Yeah. If I recall, Kim, this is off the top of my head, it's in the double range.
Okay.
For that element.
So it's a, it's a, that's an upgrade for us.
Sammy, I actually would like to comment on, you talked about equity, guessed about that. And one of the things that I want to point out that oftentimes we see value engineering and we go with a basic playground knowing and expect PTAs to fundraise for playground equipment. And that is just not an equitable model that we wanted to enforce in this situation. And so we wanted to make sure that our schools, all students had equal access to play facilities. And this is how we ensure that.
Beautiful, beautiful. This is good. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to the glider. I've been on the glider before with students and it's awesome. And it is, it is the definition of an inclusive piece of equipment as opposed to an accessible piece of equipment. It's amazing.
Nice.
I can't wait to play on it.
Me too. We should have a play dates when things are permissive. And hopefully they will be permissive when this is up there. So any other questions? Vince?
So this is kind of a hard question. We've had a little bit of controversy with synthetic play surfaces in the past. And I'm just, can you talk to what the, these tiles are made of? And if any outgassing is possible, I know that, so there are members of our community that are concerned about that. And I know that this is from a company that builds structures for children. I have to, I would hope that they had already thought about, but can you speak to that at all?
I don't know that I am able to speak to that right now. But I, they are a, on a state contract and, and I, the vendor is the manufacturer. And so I could get you more information on that, Vince. Dale, do you have any information on that?
I'm sorry, I do not. This is the, the same product that you'll see at Garfield and I think some of your.
Right. And municipalities and, and you know, counties all over the country are using these materials. It's just that I'm, I'm, I'm just anticipating that that question may come up. And so if we could just have that information in hand, what's, what are these tiles made out of? And what, if any, you know, chemicals and what are the levels?
Yeah, we could, we can provide an update on that. And I will tell you that from, it's been about a decade since I looked into it, but these were more sustainable than the port and place rubber servicing. And so, but we can definitely update on that.
Great, thank you so much.
We have, we have a question from Lou.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering about the swing safety. Like the, I seen regular swings, is that at all the schools?
Um, yes, we have, you're talking about the bays of swings. Yes, we have them at all of our schools. And this will be the first playground that we put the rubber tiles underneath the swings.
Okay, I mean more the actual swings themselves. I'm asking like, my child actually has a permanent scar from the swings on her face at Garfield. And so I'm just kind of curious about that level of safety considerations with the swings because accidents happen, you know, and so, yeah.
And so injuries can happen on swings. And I will, I will tell you that some of the conversation we had in designing our play equipment was about students being able to have all kinds of different experiences. And swinging is really important to a group of our kids who need that back and forth motion. And they are very popular. And so one of the things that we looked at to mitigate some of those safety issues is how is visibility and supervision around the swings, around all the pieces of equipment? And but I, I do know that there are inherent risks with swings. But I think we decided that they were such a desired piece that it was worth the, the extra supervision that are, is necessary.
Thank you. I was just kind of curious if there was any like with newer equipment, because the ones at Lincoln are quite old, if there was any, you know, like kind of safety things that are part of the structure itself? That where they, back if they get hit with them, could they get a laceration, that kind of stuff?
Oh, okay. So they are rubber seat swings, I believe. And, but we could get some more information on that. These are pretty standard swing sets that we use in the district now. One of the things that's really important is for us to keep on top of inspections to make sure that the seats are still in good condition, that the chains are not degradating and that the, especially the S-6s at the top that they connect to. So.
Awesome. Thanks, Kim. I really love the thought that you all put in there and, and thinking about tracking back. It also comes home, those wood chip thingies. Shoes, so I know I have, I had lots in my car over the many years of being a parent and in the house. So I appreciate that, all the thought you all are putting into this. My small child is going to be sad to not see the hot tub she suggested, which I told her was not going to be there. Thank you.
But an interesting comment is that most every classroom had somebody suggest a water slide for the playground. We couldn't pull it off though.
I heard that too. She wanted to see the drawings of the water slide and the hot tub, so.
This is wonderful. Other comments, questions? We have one from Vince.
Well, no, I was going to see if you wanted to entertain a motion.
Can I ask actually one more question? Weather conditions? Because I've heard about the building of Husky in the 60s. I, I've heard from the community, they say California designer and they did not think about the rain for the building. So are we making sure that the weather conditions, this is going to be durable with weather conditions in Oregon?
Absolutely. It will be. It is.
Good.
And so we have thought about weather and conditions also. You know, we have a really fantastic covered play area that comes with both of our new schools. Actually, all of our elementary schools will end up with covered play areas. And, and we also took into consider not only the wet and the cold, but also the hot, trying to make sure that we don't end up with metal slides that will burn students and things like that.
Wonderful, wonderful. Good, this is perfect. Vince, what's your motion?
Well, with great appreciation, I move to approve Consolidated Action.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second.
I think Therese was the first second, right? So it's been moved by Vince and second by Therese to approve Consolidated Action. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? I want to remark my deep appreciation for this work. We're doubling capacity for solar energy, helping our buildings to be sustainable, but also have good stewardship of community and taxpayer money. And also I want to say the appreciation of increased investments in the playground that is responsible and that knows the, the beauty of investing in playgrounds. It pays a huge dividend, which is a whole child. So thank you for doing this work. And on that note, let's take a roll call vote. Say aye if you agree and nay if you don't on the motion to approve Consolidated Action. Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Conroy?
Aye.
Chair Finger McDonald?
Aye.
Director Jones?
Aye.
Director White Bear?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, passes. Congratulations and thank you very much. And thanks Vince for giving Kim and Dale the rest of their evenings as a break from us. So now you can rest of your evenings without watching us doing the work for the work sessions. So thanks a lot. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
All right. With that, now the next item on the agenda is the Promise Scholarship Work Session to highlight. So this is, oh, okay. I got logged out from, from this one.
I can still see you.
Okay. Okay, so how about you unmute or, yeah, let me, I apologize. Can you still hear me? Okay, nevermind.
So I think the owl is still good.
Okay. I just got an error that's, I shouldn't bother with. So with that, we'll continue that. We have a Promise Scholarship Work Session, which is generously sponsored and supported by OSBA. It's helped us to do professional development and also give us funds to award for students in the district. The school board has done work on mental health and social emotional learning in the past year. And now we're focusing on public engagement and also, most importantly, racial justice and investing in a, in our, our time in systemic change that addresses racial justice. So with that, I want to hand it in to Ryan and also we have Kristen Miles and Marcian.
Yeah, thank you, Sammy. So tonight is the second of three meetings that we'll have this year where Kristen's been able to join us as well as Marcian. And so tonight, the focus will, keeping in mind, you know, the, the intention is to bring us towards a further development of our equity policy. And so tonight, we'll be doing some learning together and also have the opportunity to review some other policies from across the Northwest, actually across the country. I think Baltimore is included in there as well, but some equity, racial equity policies. And again, to sort of make some considerations about how we want to move forward in our final meeting together. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, with gratitude to Kristen and Marcian for their work to put together the information to be shared tonight.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thanks for having me back. And as always, it's, it's a pleasure to see you, a pleasure to work with you. And it's been absolutely lovely collaborating with Marcian behind the scenes. I told Ryan, I want to write books with your staff. You have, you have a great staff. I love working with you all. So I'm going to hand it over to Marcian in a minute, but I want to just check in and say, did everybody get a chance to do their homework that we assigned? If any board's going to be prepared, it's going to be you all. Wonderful. So we won't need to give any sort of like half hour breaks to catch up in the meantime. I know we've got a lot to go through, so I'm going to hand it over to Marcian to get us started and we'll, we'll be doing a text protocol a little bit later.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. And it's just been such an honor to work with you. I look forward to our phone calls and our virtual planning meetings. So thank you so much, everybody. Good evening. It's just an honor and a privilege to be here with you once again. I was reflecting before logging into Zoom today, the last time we were together. And that was with our community members, but prior to that was our August retreat. So I know a lot has happened in the last several months. So I just want to thank you and to also just thank you from the bottom of my heart for this, for this topic tonight. It's something I'm incredibly passionate about. And if Corvallis can't do it, I don't think anybody else can. So here we go. Um, so Kristen and I actually have, I think the content for tonight, we could do, it would literally take several days, but we wanted to highlight some pieces. And we're going to be talking a little bit later around our purpose for tonight. So, and we'll share that slide in just a second. But really, my intention with all of you tonight is really to create a place for community, to create space for reflection. So I hope that near you, near your desk, you have a writing utensil and you have some paper because we're going to get you to spend some time writing and reflecting and sharing. So thank you for that. And I think before we start, Parker, would you mind starting the PowerPoint if that's okay? There we go. Yes, all right. Next slide. Parker, thank you. There we go. Um, so like I mentioned earlier, a lot has happened over the last several months. And so here, I wanted to just spend a couple of moments, giving you some time to think about your experiences this year as a board, particularly since we started this racial equity work with you in August. And I think about this visual as something that is very, it visualizes really the, the embracing of the past in order to help us inform the future. So really thinking about what are we doing today? And so what I want you to do is just take a moment to think about what the board has done over the last several months around racial equity. Okay? And Sammy did talk a little bit earlier around the, your board goals, which is community engagement in the racial equity work, racial justice. So it'd be, so thinking about your board goals, the, the time that you've had an opportunity to engage in the protocol, and we're going to be talking about that in a moment. The times where you've listened to community members, when we had some Delta parents, our state, some safe students come and present the time that you've had in the school renaming process, as well as the SIP, the school improvement presentations from our amazing leaders at the elementary and secondary level. So as you think about the work that you've done, we know that our racial equity journey doesn't end. It's something that just keeps on going. And we add every single day a page to our racial equity autobiography through our beliefs, our feelings, our thoughts and our actions. So what we want you to do, we want to invite you to just take a few moments and do a personal reflection. And here's the question I'm going to ask you. What are your personal reflections so far this year and how racial equity has shown up or not? And its coherence with board goals? So what did you hear from leaders? What did you hear from the community? So again, just take a moment, just maybe a minute and a half to reflect on your year so far as a board member and how racial equity has shown up in the work that you've done. So we're going to give you about a minute, minute and a half to do that. And then we'll come back together. Take about another 30 seconds. All right. So as we come back together, Lindsay, would you mind taking the PowerPoint off? Thank you, Parker. All right. So hopefully that was enough time. So I'd like to open it up to board members that would like to share their reflections. What comes up for you as you think about your racial equity work as a board so far?
I mean, I'm happy to go first. And I usually, when I, whenever I do this type of work, I always think macro and get, get at a more granular level. So I was thinking macro and, you know, I'm, I'm, went back to the beginning of the year and I remember suggesting to this board that we take up an anti-racism resolution like other districts in the state have done. And I've just been, I've been consistently proud of this board because this board rejected. And I've just been I've been consistently proud of this board because this board rejected that notion that action was more important than just taking up a resolution that was that would just be words. We're not, we're not interested in hand waving. We're interested in actually doing work and right on the heels of that, we took up the the school renaming resolution. But you know, one thing that has really struck me this year is how the energy around racial justice, social justice work has changed. In our community, we feel much more more galvanized since in the community, at the state, in state agencies, we there's much more support for doing this work. And nationally, I mean, clearly there is a movement and I I've really noted the shift from equity. We've been talking about equity for a decade now to anti racism, which is a different thing. And there's just so much more, so much more energy there. And what goes along with that is that we're also feeling some resistance. And so we have to have the courage to stay with this work and help folks that don't understand yet to come along and what they need to learn.
Thank you, Vince. Others?
Yeah, I would just, I agree with what what Vince is saying and I I cite a couple of examples. Are the task force to rename our schools as one example of an area that I think we really worked to address issues related to racial equity. Also, addressing the representation of Columbus Day through another resolution, looking at making sure that we are recognizing our the the literal geographic routes of the area that we occupy in the space and calling attention to that. And Director White Bear's leadership in that process was, you know, it was instrumental in in bringing that to fruition. And I think those are two examples that I'm particularly proud of for this year. And I believe that those are examples that have a powerful effect to a spillover effect in that we're bringing those examples of leadership. Our staff are empowered to speak out, to align themselves in their classroom content and experiences with what they understand the boards, what their vision to be and also but also our proactive steps. It's not just a goal on a piece of paper, but these are actions we're taking that are not necessary to make the district function from from day to day or to fulfill our responsibilities to provide super supervision to the superintendent. These are things that go deeper than that and I I hope and I think the feedback we've gotten from the community is that they see that as as something beyond just what the board is is responsible to do at its base, but that these are these are our efforts to grow deeper roots around issues of racial equity.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. That was real powerful. Others?
Um, so I was thinking about sort of the sort of movement from the past into the future and how we've been, I feel like if you know, with all the things that have been mentioned already, um, you know, the not doing a resolution, the the renaming task force, the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. Those are all things where we've considered experiences and voices about what's where we've been and we're looking at taking that and making changes so that as we move forward, we're doing that embracing those experiences from the past and using them to create a district and an environment for our students that is is better for everyone. Um, and so I think that you're sort of using those voices and experiences and and acting on it, not just giving it lip service has been really a positive thing.
Thank you, Sarah.
I would jump in to say that that I'm a little more on the concrete. I appreciate all those things that have been mentioned. I also really want to say I appreciate Lou and the extra nudge of of sensitivity and awareness that she has brought for me. So thank you, Lou, a lot. Things that I would point to concretely on the positive side include just our look at advanced class AP class access as a maybe a note of what's that about? And and what can we do about it to 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 encourage more students of color or backgrounds different that that we can get them into those classes? I appreciated the sharing from CHS about what their graduates of color said about their experience because I I can just picture that staff getting an aha moment of wow, this is an awareness that we maybe didn't have. So I think that's really good to get that feedback to them. And and then the ability to maybe hire some new staff members of color that I'm personally aware of that I think will be great assets to at least in my particular case, the CHS area. So hooray. My puzzle or question, so not everything works out fine for me, is is how anti racism slash equity plays out in the discussion around our elementary schools and the math offerings. I don't quite yet still understand the the recalibration or not offering perhaps I'll call it advanced math or some higher level of math at some of those grade levels and how that plays out. I'm not saying I'm critical, I just I don't quite understand it. So I think there's a heads up there that maybe we need to look at. But I appreciate the work that's been done and thanks true to Marcy Ann for her leadership. I feel really good about getting awareness, so.
Thank you, Jay.
And I would just piggyback on on Jay's example. Of the the things that he's talking about are things he learned more about during our school presentations. And just to think about the way that those have happened, the previous years that I've been here, probably the previous years Aaron was here and so it's probably happened like that for a long time where it was individual schools talking about what was happening in the individual buildings and for our principals and leaders to come together and speak with one voice about this important work, I felt was really a great example of the progress that's been made. So to me, I know that you many of you left with feeling optimistic and hopeful from that. And I felt a real strong sense of pride about the work that's happening. So for me, that's one of those moments that that stands out to me in in my role in the district.
I was gonna, oh, were you about to go, Sammy?
After you.
Okay, I was like, your light didn't light up, but your mouth was moving because I forget you seen that. I was just going to add in all the things that have been said, but also that when things are put out there that I feel like we really stand behind it and not just be like, we're just saying this just to say it. It's something that we're looking for to help create better support and think about racial equity very specifically. And the shift to use anti racism, I think, has given the board and staff the ability to explain why decisions are made. Because it's different than using the equity frame because you're interrupting racism structurally with anti racist work. And I think that that shift in backing a lot of the statements that Ryan has put forward in our actions as well as a board has reflected racial equity. I was thinking about for goal number, I'm trying to scroll, goal number one was student achievement. I was thinking about, actually, I was thinking about the math thing, example that Jay gave. And thinking about the questions that we ask as far as like video requirements in the classroom during remote learning. Okay, maybe I asked mostly about, but just those kind of questions that we ask for clarification, that way we know what the policies and practices are that are backed up that help create more racial equity experiences for the students even in remote. And this for number two and number three, the school renamed task force, I think applies to both of those. The amount of learning that's going on by everybody involved with that and the other kids in the schools and all the staff that are involved in it that are looking into this and community members. It's been like people are looking up who these names are and it's created this huge educational opportunity for the community and it's really awesome. I know I said it was beautiful before and I really think it is and seeing that community engagement with number two especially. But I think that that renamed task force is also about real world learning and applying what you learn. For number four, for health and wellness, this is as far as I got. Actually, it was actually goal number six, I guess. And and four is thinking about the impacts of COVID-19 specifically disproportionately impact kids of color. And I think that the way the slow pace that the district has taken in getting kids back into school while having a clear path to get kids back in school, that that's something that I know I've heard appreciation about because of those impacts that especially impact Black and Brown kids, what the deaths and the severe illnesses impacting statistically those students the most. So I think about even with the COVID-19 response that even if that wasn't the number one thing, that it it really supported the racial equity work in itself. And then the last thing I was going to mention is some of the behind the scenes learning that the board's been doing. And I just wanted to appreciate you all for engaging with some of the material and and the staff too that did with like the social justice tour booklets to learn more about our local history here in Corvallis and the land acknowledgement modules and stuff like that where it's helping think about racial equity in a localized sense as well. And so those are some things I have thought of in that short amount of time, Marcy Ann.
That's great. Thank you, Lou. Sammy, did you want to go next?
Sure, unless Vince you want to go, but if you're going to talk about governors, you're going to steal my thunder.
No, I just wanted to take a long view because I think on this call, I think it's Marcy Ann and Melissa are the only people here on this call that have been here longer than me. So I came onto the board in 2013 and ever since the beginning, we've we've been focused on on equity. And back in 2017, 2016, we we changed superintendents, we had a radical change on the board. And you know, you will recall that that was a tenuous time and we were worried about continuity and leadership and continuing this this equity work. And I I want to bring us back to the SIP, the SIPs, both our primary and secondary SIPs this year, I think are really emblematic of how when a board keeps focus on a particular topic, what happens with staff and how much energy comes to it. And you know, for those on in the public, we our teams had switched to where they were developing plans independently to unified plans and they were highly focused on equity. So I just want to applaud the staff. I want to applaud the superintendent for not just maintaining continuity on this work, but accelerating it. And so just keeping focus is just critically important and this board has done that.
Nice. This is good. I want to add the a governance lens, the relationship between the board and the superintendent and both with the public and the community members. There is something inherent that is kind of problematic with a school board. And one of the things is we're seven board members, we're never going to be reflective of the 52 or 52 plus languages spoken in the community. It is a system and structure that's not necessarily compatible with what our community members are comfortable with. I remember Lou mentioned something about that and my Middle Eastern experience, not necessarily my generation, maybe before that, you have the mejlis where people sit together in an open area and people could have the conversation with their leaders. We don't do it that way in the structure. People sit in front of us and we heard that in our discussion with our teachers and community members during the meeting that the boardroom is not necessarily the place for all the work and all the discussion. And here's the important caveat, how can we empower Ryan and empower staff to do that important work? And some of that's important work, engagement work, it needs to be done in task forces, in the classroom. And and you can't really do it unless the board tells you, we support you on that. And also something that's not completely there yet, we need to work on it. You have the policies that supports you and that's the discussion around racial educational equity that's stronger than what we have. So our I so I can feel that's our superintendent is fully empowered. So really understanding what the board can do with its authority according to proper governance and also what the board can do with the structure that it has and what it can do, we should really empower our superintendents and team. I feel this year has been much, we're improving on that perspective better than ever before, where I feel that superintendent is taking leadership on aspects that are very important. And we are kept apprised about it, but also we trust him that he's leading the ship toward the right direction. So I feel that has been a work maybe not necessarily spoken, it's not on paper. Well, it is in our working agreements and our board policies, board discussions, it is there, but I think it's very important. Appropriates board governance that empowers the superintendent.
Great. Thank you, Sammy. That was very powerful. Melissa, so anything you want to add?
I I think that the one thing that I've noticed and and Lou's already mentioned it, but you know, COVID really kind of shined a light on our issues around racial equity in education. And I think every plan that we've put forward to you and every consideration for our students about school and what it's looked like has had a racial equity drive. And I just it's so that's just kind of in the forefront of my mind.
Thank you, Melissa. Did everybody get a chance to share? Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, you know, I am so glad that this is being recorded. Because at some point, it'd be great for you to listen back and hear the amazing work that the school board has done. And you know, when we first started this work and thank you Vincent for talking about our beginnings, we there was this idea of random acts of equity, right? As opposed to transformation. And so all of you shared such amazing actions consciously consciously racially conscious actions that are really impacting our community and our students and our staff of color. So thank you, thank you so much for this amazing work. And this is why we live the Sankofa. We need to embrace the past in order to inform the present. And this is this is about racial conscious raising and this is what you are all experiencing. So thank you so much for the amazing work that you're doing. And we also know that this work isn't done, right? There's still a lot of work to do. But without the work that you've done, without that internal work as individuals and as board members, without having done that work, it's really hard to inform and transform systems. So thank you for that. So Parker, if you could bring our PowerPoint back, that would be great. All right. So if you can take us to the third slide, the next slide. And you all saw this before and this is something the protocol, which is our navigational tool and something that you've heard from our leaders as they presented at the SIP presentations. You've been utilizing it, you've been internalizing it and it's a tool that we use in our system. And I I to this day feel like this has been our North Star in terms of helping us create spaces for reflection and for intra and interracial dialogue, which has helped us examine and address institutionalized structures that have that promote racial disparities. And so just as a quick recap, on the left there, you'll see the compass and the compass is the way that we enter into a conversation. And that is where helps us understand how we enter the conversation and how and meet others where they're at. The four agreements, these are how we contain the conversation, how we have the conversation, so staying engaged, experiencing discomfort, speaking our truths and expecting and accepting non closure. And lastly, the agreements and the agreements help us engage in deeper, meaningful transformative conversation where we begin to eliminate racial disparities. And one of the things that I appreciate about the protocol in its entirety is that it gives us a way to get into the conversation. So again, that's the compass. It gives us a way to stay in the conversation and that's the four agreements. And while we are in the conversation, it helps us not just skim the surface and that's where the six conditions are so important. So for the time that I'm presenting, one of the things that I want to offer is that I'm going to try really, really hard to keep this on the left. So for the time that I'm presenting, one of the things that I want to offer is that I'm going to try really, really hard to keep this on the left side of the compass. The feeling and believing because that's where adaptive work happens. That's where adaptive leadership happens and that's where transformation happens. Usually when folks hear about something that's racially impactful, most folks tend to react. There's nothing wrong with reacting. It just means that we want to spend more time at this point, more in the believing and the feeling. Because that's where we really lean into the systems and structures and kind of understand our why as to how we're showing up in this space. So throughout our time together, I will do my best to keep us in the protocol. And I also would like for you to just be thinking about parts of the protocol that you're using because it's important to recognize. What parts of the protocol you're using and what parts may be. You know, you're 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 kind of hesitating because that's the area that you want to lean into tonight. Next slide, Parker. Okay, so tonight's objectives and we have Kristen and I have four. The first objective is to understand and create shared language, why race matters. Articulated collective why for the critical importance of racial equity in board policy. And I think you have all done a beautiful job. Of talking about your why and the work you've already done. We will discuss and apply the promised protocol to racial equity policy packet, which Kristen shared with you earlier. And then lastly, we will define the process to add racial equity to board policy. Okay, next slide. As I think about why, why race matters. And who will be impacted by the racial by the racial policy, I wanted to start with. One of our pillars and if you can recall when our community members presented a couple of months ago. One of our equity transformational plan pillars is students at the center. And we are all educators, we are all here because of our students. So we wanted to share, this is about a four minute video. In this video really represents the many narratives that are reflective of the lived experiences of our students of color. And so we just want you to take a moment, watch the video and as you watch the video, I want you to be thinking about. I want you to be thinking about the impact of race on students. So again, get out that that piece of paper that you have. And as you're listening to the video, I want you to be thinking about the impact of race on students. Okay, we'll come back together and we'll share. Thank you, Parker, for starting the video.
I'm from Haiti and Nigeria, like three things, like I'm Dominican, Puerto Rican and black.
I'm biracial. I have an African American father and an Irish American mom.
My name's Lamine. I'm Muslim.
I'm Indian, British, Scottish and American.
My parents are from Venezuela and I was sharing like one of the foods that we eat. And then I got made fun of. They were like, what is that? Ew, oh, ew, what is that? And like, I cried because I felt like, oh, there's something wrong where I'm from. Like maybe like it's bad, like I'm different.
I am an African American adopted girl, lonely child. And I live with my two dads.
I remember when I was younger, I went to with my family to a restaurant. And they made us pay in advance just in case we like didn't pay afterwards. And that was kind of upsetting.
You start to notice that people are different and you have comments, they might be racist or they might not be. But by the time you get older, you know that it is racist and you should stop.
I feel a little scared about if I, you know, just walk down the street, you know, cops might just think I'm doing something bad. And then if I'm trying to explain to them, they won't listen and then just start beating me up and doing terrible things to me.
I think there's like this anxiety that kind of comes with being biracial, like that kind of eats away at you, like. Almost like you have to prove yourself like that you're one or the other, like, for example, like. I hear the phrase, you're not black all the time.
People sometimes think that I'm supposed to like talk ghetto or like whatever that is.
Oh, she's uneducated because she's African American.
Because I'm Hispanic or Latino, I can't have like a lot of money.
Just this weekend, I went with my friend to Urban Outfitters and we were shopping and I really wanted to try on this dress. And then this lady that was just like there, she was kind of like watching me and just like, I'm not going to steal it or anything.
I think white privilege is the idea that in your everyday live life, you're getting treated differently and sometimes with more respect. Or people just trust you more or they have certain expectations of you, like you might be smarter or you might be wealthier. Because you're white, it makes me feel guilty sometimes, even though it's not my fault, like I feel guilty for having a privilege. That like I don't deserve.
If I was ever like the mayor or something that controls the policemen, I would want to go out and look in the neighborhoods where there are people that's very friendly. So you can pick them instead of like these guys that's just doing all this training. It's better to pick people that's more minded with the community than to just pick some new guy and get on the street like it's just not going to work out.
We have like these kids from, they're Ecuadorian and they get made fun of because they look Mexican. And they get told on a daily basis, oh, you like tacos? Oh, you like churros? How come I saw your mom on the corner selling Ices? Like it's, like I feel bad for them personally because I'm like, wow, like they're not, and like even though they tell them, I'm not. Mexican, I'm Ecuadorian, they still get teased.
Thank you, Parker. If you could stop the PowerPoint, that would be great. Okay. That's, I watched that video several times and it's, it's pretty impactful. And so I would love to hear just from a couple of folks, just when you think about the protocol and you think about the compass, the thinking, believing. Where are you and what came up for you as you watched that video?
I'll go. I think I'm in a mix of the feeling and is it, what's the action one, the doing, feeling? Acting, thank you. I was like, I like to have it up because I'm like, I like the compass, but. I think it's a mix of those two because literally everything on there except for the white privilege is like. Things that I've experienced in school growing up and they're things that my kids still experience, like literally in this district. And so I think about the impacts in how real they are with kids and like having conversations. With other parents about how do I talk to our kids about these experiences? I think that's where I'm in the feeling section. And the acting because it's not right. And I'm like, I was experiencing this, I'm in my forties. And there's kids still experiencing this, like how much has changed. And so I'm always in that action mode, the acting one because. It's, it's not right. And even for the child who thinks about guilt, that's something taught like it's not. Nobody wants people to feel guilty for their identities. It's just understanding. How identity impacts us is more what it is and how to, and creating change and not using guilt as a way to not enact change. So that's where I'm in a mix of those two, I think.
One more person.
Sarah was first.
Yeah, so. You, I have a very different experience than Luke moving through the world. One of the ones who's assumed to be. You know, lots of positive things because of how I look and what's, yeah, I'm definitely feeling thing because what I see is a bunch of you. Beautiful kids probably have amazing, unique things about them and they're talking. How they're labeled and how assumptions are made about them purely because of how they look. And yeah, I think it goes with the whole. We pigeonhole kids or we pigeonhole people. You're basically things we really don't know about them. And I think we lose the uniqueness and beauty and gifts of a lot of these kids. Because they end up hiding behind. Assumptions that have been made about them.
Thank you, Sarah. Sammy, were you going to say something?
Well, I will. Briefly, I think when I was reading the policies, I was in all dimensions of the of the compass except the feeling. Maybe I had one of the. Paragraphs that maybe this fits the feeling and now I'm feeling all the feelings from this video. So it just looks like now you're helping me fit the two pieces of the puzzle. Policy and really where the rubber meets the road, the road, but also I'm. Parts of the feeling is driving me to the moral aspect, which is this is not fair. We should do something about it. Kids don't deserve to. To enter this world and experience this world this way just because who they are and it makes me feel angry and motivated that I want to make change. And think about fairness and justice.
Thank you. And Sammy, thank you for modeling all parts of the of the compass. Thank you for that. I think, anybody else before we move on? These are powerful, powerful testimonies. Thank you for sharing.
Teresa's there.
Okay, great. Teresa?
Thanks, Sammy. Well, I first just want to say that that is, it's such a very difficult thing to watch. To watch and to know. The, to hear a summary of the events behind, you know, what they're, what they're sharing with us, those children in the video are sharing with us and to understand. That that was happening in real time, in in real, in the flesh for those individuals. But I don't think we could really, if you haven't gone through an experience like that yourself, you can hear their words. I don't think it's possible to really understand what, what that feels like in that moment. I, I am a white person. I have, I grew up as a white person. I grew up identifying with. The pieces of my community that were very typically white. I also grew up poor and I grew up with some experiences that I I could resonate with in the video. But even in the midst of that, what I'm very aware of in my adult life is that my experience of poverty was very different because I was a white person. That there were, I was afforded opportunities that the the poor. People in my community that were not white were not necessarily offered, weren't offered, not necessarily, I don't need to qualify it. They weren't offered those. And I was offered those. And you know, it's a. It took a time, I think, for me to to really understand and wrap my head around what it meant to accept. My privilege when I was so very much aware of the areas where I did not have privilege. And. I think I am now as an adult, I am finally reaching a space where, sorry, my dog is in the background. I hope you can't hear him. He, he thinks that he should have my attention right now. As an adult, I, I have finally, I think, entered a space where I'm able to grieve that as a child. I had to. Both experience the, the loss that came with poverty and. Have that juxtaposed with the privilege that came from being, from being white. And that was, that is still, I think, even now, many years later and not living in poverty anymore. Still very difficult for me to wrap my head around knowing that my experience of leaving poverty was very likely. Guided heavily guided by the fact that I was a white person trying, trying to exit that. So. I, I don't, I don't know where I am. I think. Right now, I think I'm, I'm very much in touch with the emotional piece of all of these topics and the general trajectory of what really can be done, very much wanting to take action. Very much not entirely confident that any action will do any good. So I I'm grateful that we're having this conversation this evening. I'm hoping that it will help me to reorient myself to why I I believe. That we are responsible to one another to, to create change in our community for our children. So anyway, that's all I, I'm. That's what I had, that's what came up for me as I watched that video.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa, and thank you for that personal reflection and that discovery. That's, that's really powerful.
Can I say one thing about that?
Yes, Ryan, please.
One of the things that I've, I've noticed over time has been conversations around poverty. And conversations around race and how oftentimes. How oftentimes those things are sort of intermingled in a way that takes away from the. Sort of the importance of race and conversation. And so I appreciate, I really appreciate Teresa sharing that because I think it's a great example of how, how it's. It's easier for us, it's easier for me to talk about poverty than it is for me to talk about race. And I think that's true for many people. And I think that is. But in, in the example that Teresa shared with us tonight, it's, it's saying that I recognize that I had. Poverty had an impact on me is what I heard her say, but I also heard her say that race had an impact on me. And those weren't, two things weren't necessarily the same. The outcome wasn't necessarily the same. And so I just, again, thank you, Teresa, for sharing that.
Thank you, Ryan. Parker, if we could put the PowerPoint back up? I really appreciate seeing your faces. So when the PowerPoint's up, I can't see anybody.
They're reconnecting.
All right, there we go. So if we could go to slide, there we go, the next slide, all right, the next one, all right. So I'll just spend a quick second on this particular slide. This is one that I shared with you back in August. And I think all of you and your sharing talked about. What Justice Sonia Sotomayor added in this particular. In, in, in this part, in this slide right here, where race matters to a young person addressed by a stranger in a foreign language, which he does not understand because only English was spoken at home. So race matters because of the slights, the snickers, the silent judgments that reinforce that most crippling of thoughts, I do not belong here. And so I think that video that I shared with you really attests and really explains what Sonia Sotomayor was. Talking about here. And one of the things when I shared this. Slide with you last time, I did ask for the board to just talk about what came up for you. And one of the things that resonated with me was what Director Lou shared. And so I, if we can go to the next slide, I'd love for you to read what Director. Lou said about. That slide. So just take a moment to read what she said. And so in the statement. She talks about the norm is based on whiteness and being othered when a person or group is not part of the dominant, right? And so I believe that this part of this work is, the importance of this work is to surface where the othering originated from. And so we can go back and go back. Okay. And then a common question that I get a lot. Is why are we talking about race? And I think Ryan was talking about that. And as I think about public education, I reflect on the origins and its impact on historically marginalized students. So in the next couple of slides, I wanted to share, if we can go to the next slide, Parker, wanted to share some notable pictures with you. And as we share these notable pictures with you, I want you to get that piece of paper out again. And I want you to be thinking about what comes up for you when you see these photos. And what additional below the line narrative would you want to add and what does race have to do with it? So when we talk about below the line, what we mean by that is above the line is information that is commonly shared, right? But what I want you to be thinking about is below the line information, maybe a personal story. Maybe a fact that you know or a statistic or something that you know that is below the line information that maybe isn't commonly shared. And so this picture here is of, is was circa seventeen hundreds and it's a Massachusetts Bay Company. Massachusetts Bay Company. And they make proper education compulsory, as schools become private and cater to wealthy boys and young men. Some children attend school, but not all. And African American and indigenous students are forbidden to attend. Next picture. This picture is Native American Board, is of a Native American boarding school, also known as Indian residential schools, were established in the United States during the late 19th and 20th centuries, with a primary objective of assimilation, of assimilating Native American children and youth into Euro-American culture. Next photo. In this photo, here we have Nettie Hunt and her daughter Nikki sit on the steps of the Supreme Court Building in May 18, 1954, the day following the court's historic decision in Brown versus Board of Education. Nettie is holding a newspaper with the headline, "High Court Bans Segregation in Public Schools." This photo was taken in 1979. And this is my family. And it's three generations, my mother, my grandmother, my sister, myself. We came to this country knowing very little English, and we came to this country to a school where there was no English language support, and there was no dual language program in sight. To this day, I thank my mom for two things. I thank her for doing her best to advocate for me and my education, and for never ceasing to nurture and honor my native tongue in our home. Next picture. This next picture was taken January 8, 2002, and it was No Child Left Behind. U.S. Congress implemented the NCLB to create standards and measures to improve outcomes in education. States could create their own standards, but, but would need to complete student assessments to receive federal funding. And here, President Bush signed that he's here signing the No Child Left Behind Act into law. And then our last photo is the Every Student Succeeds Act. President Obama is here on December 10, 2015, signing the bill into law on December 10. And this one replaces the NCLB in modified standardized teaching requirements. At the time, states were able to choose tests to implement, and the law replaced its predecessor of the No Child Left Behind. So as we think about the photos that we just shared with you, if we can take the PowerPoint off, I want you to be thinking about, what did you see in these photos? And what additional below the line narrative would you want to add? And what does race have to do with it? I'd like to hear from a few folks.
You have Sarah.
Yeah, I, I was struck by how much education has been used to standardize children to fit the dominant norm, which has been whiteness. You have a town full of white children who all looked, although I was surprised there were girls there. And you think, the use of boarding schools to remove culture and language, and the use of standardized testing as a measure of success, that doesn't, the testing that doesn't, isn't an equitable way of teaching students, because they're not, they're not fitting every student. And so you, as we were looking at things also, like desegregating schools, you, I had an interesting conversation, I think Melissa was there at OSBA. We heard a speaker, and he was talking about desegregating schools, and what that actually ended up doing to the population of Black teachers. And that before schools were desegregated, there were lots of Black teachers. And when schools were segregated, those Black teachers all lost their jobs. And so we moved, we desegregated schools, yes, Black students were allowed to go into schools that had more resources, not always resources that fit them, and not always resources that were equitable. But we also lost the experience of having teachers that looked like them. So even though we think of that as this big positive thing, that we just desegregated schools, you know, the, the outcomes didn't always work that way. And it was desegregating schools, but making students come into a system that assumed they were going to fit into a system that was built around whiteness.
You have Vince?
So, I mean, as I was watching the, particularly the early slides, I was, I was taken back to my own education experience. And the first thing in the first slide, the one from, what, 1700 or so, was just the conformity, the, you know, what you touched on, Sarah, was the, the standardization and the separation by, by look, by gender, also by what they were wearing. There was stratification across income even, even then as well. And so I was, I started rethinking about my own experience growing up, and how that was completely reflected right into the 1980s, how I, as a white male, was taught to not only conform, not express my own, my own self, I had to conform to what the model was, and was, was asked, expect to do that. And when I deviated from that, I was socially controlled, both, you know, socially by my peers, but also institutionally. But also to reflect that back out by, through my own behavior, you know, hazing, I haven't always been this person, you know, and I thought about how forcing conformity beyond myself, across, you know, gender lines, across, you know, sexual preference, sexual identity, you know, race, even secondarily along, you know, income lines, and how I was expected to be adept in the language of othering, and to develop the, the skill in deploying that lexicon to force conformity in those around myself. And as I think about the change, and, you know, the, the images you selected are very, are actually very apt, because what you're seeing is a recession of, of white male aggression, because that's what it really is, is that white males aggressively impose their control over institutions, over community. And so that's what I'm pulling out of that. And so as a white male, I have to learn to roll that back, to control that, to unlearn that lexicon of behavior.
Thank you, Vincent.
There is a timeline or a trend, except for your unique experience, Marcy, on, over time, there, I would draw a line where you're expecting every people to conform, expecting to, in 1700s and 1800s even, to treat people differently based on, on the things that were mentioned. And the trend of how the systems were working is, okay, let's not standardize on a national level. Now, the best case scenario, which is every student success, every student succeed is states, you do what you want, so you can customize, but have a standard for the state. Still, they're expecting standardization on a state. And you broke that narrative with your own unique experience, which is, no, you still can have a family and nurturing mother who will honor you for who you are, to appreciate your heritage and celebrate that. And, and that was a highlight, as I listened to you, is, we can get there, we can have individualized learning experience for students, despite their abilities, or racial identity, or any identity, where they can learn the way they, that works best for them to be the best of themselves. And, and standardization might work for us engineers with widgets and, and products, but humans are unique, and we can't really standardize their learning experience. Everyone is unique. And your experience was just like the highlight for me. Here's the trend, and here's what we can do better.
Thank you, Sammy. Lou?
I didn't know if we were raising hands or not in this section, so I didn't raise the last time I was, am I supposed to raise, so I'm raised?
Go for it. It's all yours.
Yeah, the very first picture that came up, literally the first thing I thought of was, this is exactly why pedagogy of the first exists. That was what I first thought, because of like, looking at the kids that were made to be a little, like, in their spots, to receive this information, and to have a uniform identity in a classroom. And I mean, of course, that was the whole premise behind boarding schools to the Kill the Indian Save the Man slogan, to replace culture that was constructed out of that norm. But whenever I think about the ways that those earlier images were constructed, it's so old, right? It goes all the way back, like, the way that education is modeled here is really tied a lot to like Greco-Roman stuff. And thinking about the construction of the academy and schools in that aspect of like, who has the knowledge, and who's the keeper of the knowledge, was all men, and all cis men at that time period too, in the terms we would use. And that was replicated here in the United States. And I think, and still heavily, that that Greco-Roman time period is viewed as like the height of civilization, and the standard of civilization is still reflected in schools today, even though there was other existing civilizations as well, even here. And so that's where those older images always take me back to even farther. And then seeing the more current ones, and thinking about how much change has happened, and how much change is still needed. Because I really like what you were saying, Sammy, about like, standards work for some things, but not all things. And so like, how do we gauge things using a standard? And the standard is always built upon something that holds dominance. And in the context of society we live in, this is still heavily a white dominant society. And it's heavily a white male dominant society. And so I think that all of those things are important to think about. And that's, that's what was coming up for me in the picture. So I was reflecting on the earlier stuff as you're going through the slides and thinking of like, how much change has happened, but still some of that is very present still, even though it looks different now.
I think that's a really good point, Lou. So as we think about, and, and all of what each one of you shared is, is so impactful, and that's the reason why we need to take a look back in order to embrace the past, maybe not embrace it, but to be reflective of the past, so that way we can transform the future. And so thank you for, for sharing that. And then a couple of things that stood out to me was, you know, the, the unlearning, right? Because we've been socially constructed, and a lot of the images that you saw was about social constructions, and the way that public education was designed. And somebody once told me, they said, you know, public education isn't broken, it's actually doing what it was supposed to do. And if you look at that first picture, right? And so part of our work, and part of the board's work in the racial equity policy, is to reimagine how our schools can be, how our students of color, our indigenous students, families, and communities can experience public education differently. And I think some of the testimonies that you shared at the beginning of our time together really exemplify that in such a short time, amazing things can happen. And so before I hand it over to Kristin, and again, I could spend all day with all of you, because even the conversation about public education, that, that could be a two-day seminar. I wanted to, and at least end my piece for now on, on something that I, it just means a lot to, I think, our district. And one of the things that you hear a lot of us say, and I think you might have even heard administrators talk about this, is their purpose and their why, right? So when we think about the work that we've done as a school district in accelerating our racial equity work, our North Star has been to really understand our purpose and our why. And I like that saying, I've actually said on a billboard a long time ago, it said, "A goal without a plan is just a dream." And so the racial equity policy, that is our plan. And that is our North Star in having language that means something, that it's not just words on a page. And so in a moment, we're going to share this last video, and Kristin, I shared it with her, and she said, "Oh, the board's seen this before." And I'm like, "Great," because I've seen it a thousand times, and I can, it never gets old. But in this last video, and Parker, if you could put the, the video up for us, it is a video I've seen gazillion times, and it never gets old. And it's Know Your Why by Michael Jr. But what I want you to do this time is watch it again, but I want you to see it with a different, I want you to, again, get your piece of paper out, and I want you to see it with a different lens. And the question that I want you to be thinking about, and we're going to watch the video, we're going to let you go to break, because we've been, we've been sitting for quite a while. And when you get back from break, this is what we want you to share. I want you to be thinking about your personal and collective purpose for the critical importance in the adoption of a racial equity policy. So when you watch the video, what is your why, your personal why? What is your collective purpose for the critical importance in the adoption of a racial equity policy? And this won't be hard for you, because all of you have already talked about it. You've heard others share their multiple perspective and their lived experiences. So I think this will be an easy assignment. But we're going to watch the video, and then we'll take, I'm not sure, Sammy, how long breaks we get, maybe a five-minute break. But when we come back, we would love for you to share, it could be a word, it could be a couple of sentences, but I'm hoping that every board member could quickly just share their purpose and their why. So let's go ahead and watch the video.
No, and a lot of times when people hear the phrase, "How do I know?" The next thing they say is, "What? How do I know what?" But the key really isn't to know what, the key is to know why. Because when you know your why, you have options on what your what can be. For instance, my why is to inspire people to walk in purpose. My what is stand-up comedy. My what is writing books. My what can be going out with some friends to eat. In fact, another what that is moving me towards my why is a web series that we have out now called Break Time. So every Wednesday at 3 o'clock, you should subscribe to the, to the channel. We do a series called Break Time on YouTube. So 3 o'clock, we drop a new episode. One episode in particular, I'm about to show you a clip to, we were in, we were in Winston-Salem. So Break Time, this is how it works. I travel the country, I do stand-up comedy, probably an hour, hour and a half at an event. And in the middle of my show, I'll just sit down and start talking to the audience. And funny just happens. Or I'll meet somebody who's really interesting. So I met this one guy, and he said that he teaches music at a school. I was like, "All right, you teach music, you know, can't you sing?" And then, "I'm just going to show you the clip. Check it." So you're musical director?
Yes, sir.
All right, so let me get a couple, let me get a couple bars of like, amazing grace. Can you do the first part of that? Go ahead. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. That bruh could sing, you know what I'm saying? All right, all right. Now, once you give me the version, is if your uncle just got out of jail, you got shot in the back when you was a kid, I'm just saying, let me see the hood version real quick, if you know which version I'm talking about, just see if that exists. Let me see what you got. So here's the thing, the first time I asked him to sing, he knew what he was doing. The second time I asked him to sing, he knew why he was doing it. When you know your why, your what has more impact. Because you're walking in or towards your purpose.
Wonderful. Marcia, I said just five minutes. Anyone wants more than five minutes? If not, we'll be at ease for five minutes. We will reconvene at eight oh nine. Uh, let's just say eight ten.
I just want to say that I need the five minutes because every time I hear amazing grace, it makes me cry and I keep seeing this same video during meeting. And every time he gets in his second performance and it's, oh, I got a breakdown.
We're gonna have a policy that will sing like the second one.
We can't hear you, Sammy.
Now we're on mute.
I was just mentioning to Sammy that, um, when we used to all convene here in the boardroom, we would take a break, um, for five minutes. And it would never be five minutes because, uh, board members would be out talking to one another or, um, members of the audience. It would always be at least 12 to 15. So this is, uh, this is something we're going to take away from the pandemic and continue.
Part of breaks.
All right.
And yet Ryan, I don't think we're getting done any earlier. So I'm not sure that we, I'm not sure that we should make that change.
All right, the board reconvenes and Marcia, you can start whenever you want.
All right. Um, so Kristen, I really want to be mindful of time as well. And we know that this, uh, this conversation is so important and it can take us forever. But we want to also just make sure that we, we keep you, honor your time so you can go back to your families and so forth. And so before I handed it over to Kristen, I was hoping that, um, if you had a chance over the break, uh, to think about your why and your purpose for the racial equity policy, I'd love for each one of you just to share a word or a few sentences.
Fine, I'll go first then. Um, so shortly after I left high school, I went in the Navy and went from a very white environment to a very integrated environment. And that's where I got grounded in, in a sense of racial justice and working towards that. I had no skill or vocabulary or capacity in doing any of that. But I knew that it was a value for me and, um, that fortunately I ended up on the Corvallis School Board and could actually do some of that work. But I'll tell you, I read an article this year that really changed my perspective, you know? And we're all, you know, fairly, we're familiar with the idea of a white ally. And I've, up until this year, have always considered myself, oh, I need to be a white ally. I need to be working with people of color to, to fight racism and work for racial justice. But this article that I read shifted, uh, the locus of control. And, and the thesis of the author was that there's no such thing as a white ally, that, that racism fundamentally is rooted in the behavior of white people and the culture of white people. And therefore it's, it's white people's responsibility to address racism. And it really, while that is a tough pill to swallow, it's also very freeing because it, it allows you to just, we need to take the bull by the horns. It's, it's our job, people who look like me, it's our job to deal with this. And so, sorry, that was more than a few words, sorry.
Okay, Vincent, if you could put what you just said, which was very impactful in the, in I, in, in so, could you rephrase it using?
It's my responsibility to address racism and that's my why.
Great, perfect. Thank you. All right, next, next person?
I can go next. I, um, I don't know. I don't know if I can ever do anything in just one word or even in a short sentence, but I'm going to try. Um, but as, as I was thinking about this, I, I found myself reflecting on moments in my life and people in particular. Um, and I just started jotting down, um, the moments and the names that were coming to mind. Um, the first one that came to mind was, was my friend Nora and being at the swimming pool. And Nora was one of maybe only like three people of color, um, that I knew. And, um, and I remember kids not swimming by us and making comments about, um, about her skin color, things I won't repeat, but that were very, obviously very hurtful. Um, I was six, um, and I remember that. And they didn't say them about me and I can't imagine what she remembers about that moment. Um, and then later, um, was a woman named Deborah who was in the King County Jail for far past her sentence because she did not have a place to, an address to be released to that the court would approve. Um, and she was a black woman and she was serving far beyond her sentence with many other black women. And, um, and so sitting there with her and thinking about feeling powerless to do anything. Um, but then also realizing that I wasn't actually powerless. And finding a way to translate the position that I had in the homeless shelter that I worked into prioritize reserving beds for, for people that didn't have an address to be released to so that they weren't incarcerated for longer than their sentence, which was already longer than a white person's sentence would have been anyway. And those, those are just their moments that come. I don't know if it's a word, it's, it's people who I have watched and been able to interact with and known in those moments that if I was sitting in their position, those moments would not look like that. And it shouldn't be remedied because they learn to look more like the white norm. It should be, it shouldn't be. And it isn't, I don't know, I, I appreciate what Vince said about whose responsibility it is. It is, it is my responsibility to address it. It's also my responsibility to make sure that what needs to be addressed is actually the thing that needs to be addressed, not what I think needs to be addressed. But what does Nora think needs to happen in that moment? What would, what would turn that moment around for her, not for me? And then I need to be part of, of doing that, not her. Um, so that's, yeah, that's what I will say.
That's it, Therese? I think you just said it. It's my responsibility to address, right? You just said it. That's your why. Thank you.
Um, I can go. So a lot of times when I think about why racial justice work and anti-racism work is important, I think about two boys. I think about Tamir Rice and I think about my son. And the reason I think about those two children is because the policeman who shot Tamir Rice said that was a big child and I didn't realize he was just a kid when I shot him. And I live with a child who is a big child. I have a 15 year old who's six, four and weighs 300 pounds. And he wears a hoodie a lot. And nobody makes assumptions about who he is because his skin is white. If his skin were a different color, he would terrify people. And so it is my responsibility to address racism in our school system and in our society. Because every child should get to walk down the street like my son does without assumptions being made about who he is. Thank you, Sarah.
I can go. Um, what this jogged in me is, is fundamental. I got into teaching at age 36 when I realized that every kid has so much to grow. And that I have something about me that is passionate about that. So the what is we'll get into education and help every kid, no matter race, economic background, country of origin, um, I can play a role. So my, my why is, uh, for me is, is help every kid. I can go on and on. That's, that's enough.
Thank you, Trey. Lou or Sammy?
Um, yeah, I was, I've been thinking about the why part. I'm like, yeah, that is a good question, the why. And, um, been thinking about it too for other reasons with my term and stuff like that. And so I would say like, for me, the why is, um, all right. I can't, I can try to, I'm having a hard time with words today too. So sorry, but I'm trying to drink more coffee as we're meeting. But, um, for me, it's my responsibility to use the knowledge I've gained and the skills I've learned to help advocate for community and students that feel unrepresented and that feel like the system has failed them. And so that's what I feel like is part of my responsibility in addition to supporting all students, but especially those ones.
Thank you, Lou.
So I'm still processing it. I'm not sure if I can articulate this in words. Yesterday is my why. I, I, I think a quote I just read earlier today is that, uh, the best safeguard for our democracy is, is education. I think FDR said something like that. And we owe it to our kids, we owe it for this country. That's, if there is one thing I want to fix in my life is this education. So our kids don't need to feel differently or experience the world differently, at least in the classroom. At least we want to give them 12, 13 years of their lives where they can be the best of what they can be regardless of their identities. So maybe they can fix the mess that we're giving them. And that's my why.
Thank you, Sammy. Melissa or Ryan?
I can go, Ryan. I, I would say that my, my why is, um, that all kids are known. And, um, I look at that, I think a lot about myself wanting to be known when I was growing up and going to many, many different schools throughout my lifetime and never really being known. Um, uh, so I think about kids that way. And when I think about it in a perspective with, well, when I think about it with, with regard to racial equity, um, race is such an important part of knowing who our kids are and knowing what they need. Um, and, and so that's just kind of how those things keep coming together for me. I always feel like I'm going to have to change my why, but it's not about changing it. It's about understanding it's, um, in context. And in context of racial equity, it's about knowing who, who our kids are, where they come from and, and honoring that.
Thank you, Melissa.
So I would just add, you know, it's, I appreciate hearing all of your perspectives and your whys. I think it's evident in the work that you do and the decisions that you make. So, so I think not only is that your why, but I see it in action, which is, which is pretty cool to be able to say. So for me, it's really about, sort of similar to what Sammy shared. I think that public education is the, is the place where we all come together. And I would say that's more important now than ever. It hasn't always been the place where we all come together, as you can see from some of those pictures we saw earlier. But it is the place that we come together now. Beyond our school, our educational experience, we can decide who we interact with, how we interact, we can racialize that. And I think that school, public education is a place where, where we still all to come, come together as a society. And it's like, and it's the only place left where that's really accurate. And so, I think it's such an important part of who we are as a people, who our kids can become. And so, I'm just really passionate about that with regards to this policy and why it needs to become a racial equity policy instead of just an equity policy. Goes back to that quote by Sonia Sotomayor, you know, race matters. And I think that, that, that's why this work is so important right now, and, and always really has been.
Thank you, Ryan. Kristin, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you all for, this is why I love working with this group. And thank you for all, you know, looking into the conditions and being personal, local, and immediate, and, and focusing on race. If we could bring up the PowerPoint, I've got a couple of slides, and then I'm gonna share something else. And it will be the slide right after the break slide. And while we're, we're doing that, so in the beginning of this, Marcia asked that you stay on that left side of the compass. Now, we're gonna expand that, I'm not asking you to abandon the left side of the compass, but we are going to now sort of reach into the right side, which is the intellectual side and the acting side. And we wanted to share this quote, that individual behaviors can shape the success of individuals, and policies determine the success of groups. What a wonderful quote by Dr. Kendi for this, this project right here. And as you talked about your responsibility, and so, many of you had this theme of this is my responsibility, that, that now as board members, as a collective, you are taking the opportunity in, in light of your responsibility to advance a, a policy that is meant to be much more inclusive. The other, the other piece that, I, I couldn't find the source of this, but as this quote came up and Marcia and I were talking about this, I remembered another quote that I'd heard, that exception is the death of policy. And what I thought of in terms of what we're doing now is if these policies are, if, if this practice is not for all kids, you don't have it, right? If equity is not embedded in all of the work, you don't have equity. And so, I, I, I've kept those things in mind as you are talking. Go to the next slide, and then you may have to click through, I think there's maybe a couple of, yeah, go ahead and click through. So, prior to the meeting, thank you, and then I think that's it, yeah, go ahead and go to that last one. Prior to the meeting, this is what you were asked to do, you were asked to read that policy packet and to highlight the sections in your, in your policy packet that corresponded with the four compass points. And then to keep the district's equity lens questions in mind, and I think I put those on that, that sheet that you got that was with the homework. So now, in the interest of time, everybody's gonna share one per section. You may have a bunch more, but we're gonna, what I'm gonna ask you to do is pick the one that resonates with you most, and, and we're gonna go by section. So, now, if, if I could share my screen, that's, we can stop the PowerPoint. And I will share this. So what I'm gonna do, I made a little compass here, and we're gonna go through the compass, and I'm just gonna ask you, everybody, to name one section that resonated with you in each of these points. Hopefully, you found at least one in each compass point. But as we, as we collect information about what works for you, what resonates with you in these policies, you know, how much in common do you all have with each other about this? Because the one thing that we really want to leave with today is, is a process by which this is going to be developed. And so, in order to do that, we're gonna talk about conditions, but, but we really want to crystallize what are the expectations now, and what is this process gonna look like? And so, we can get from you a sense of what's really important. And as, as we apply the, the, the compass to this, this will give staff really good information. So what I'm gonna do is, we're gonna start, did someone have a question?
Yeah, Kristen, I want to clarify one thing, the southeast of the compass that we had had on its full doing, and the one that you have is rational.
Yeah.
Do you think they're identical?
Yeah. Yeah, there are a number of layers on the compass that, you know, there's like believing is moral, and acting is rational, and thinking is intellectual, and feeling is emotional. So it's all, it's, it's laid out in the same way, there are just a number of words for, for each of those.
Got it.
So we're gonna start with the, the believing moral section. And I'm gonna zoom in here, and what I'm gonna ask, you've chosen, you know, larger sections, obviously, I'm not gonna be able to type everything. But what I would like you to do is pull out the one that resonates with you, maybe not most, but a lot. You're gonna let me know which policy you're pulling it from. I would like you to read it out to your colleagues, the section that you highlighted, but I'm probably just gonna capture the theme of that and then check with you to make sure that I've captured that well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, all right, so we can, we can popcorn around, whoever's got one ready to go, go ahead and let me know.
I got one, Kristen.
Great, thanks Vince.
PPS, paragraph one. And it's the, actually, the first sentence, but the whole paragraph is great. "The Board of, the Board of Education is committed to the success of every student in each of our schools." It's a why.
Awesome, great. Who's, who's got one?
I have one.
Thank you.
On Baltimore City, really specifically, I, in the, the last sentence of the second paragraph where it says, "This district recognizes that these disparities contradict the beliefs and values we articulate about what students can achieve and the role adults have ensuring, and ensuring conditions of success."
The disparities contradict, you broke up just a little bit.
So, there are, these disparities contradict the beliefs and values we articulate.
Thank you. Spelled that wrong. Okay, who else has got one?
I'll go, PPS, page one as well, second paragraph. They say, "In lights of this mission and our beliefs, Portland Public Schools' historic persistent achievement gap between white students and students of color is an underlying that unacceptable." But the achievement gap is unacceptable.
Guys are stealing my stuff.
I have, I've got one. So in Baltimore, on page two, what's the, A, disrupting and eliminating systemic inequities? It's the third point under the sub-point B. It says, "De-center dominant narratives that problematize students of color."
In Bellevue, on page one, I don't know where to go. It's the, E, the first, that you want to address is inequities and biases that create feelings of fear, lack of belonging, and academic and psychological barriers for students.
The, the first part again, so the first part of that sentence, Lou, sorry, I lost that.
You want to address inequities and biases that create feelings of fear, lack of belonging, and academic and psychological barriers for students.
Thank you. Okay. Jay, have you got one?
Yeah, well, I've got a number, and I would piggyback on top of Vince's, but I would then point to the words from either Corvallis or Lebanon that's in the second, it's in paragraph one. It says, "Achieving equity means students' identities will not predict or predetermine their success." And right behind that, the next sentence in both of them, that, again, it's boilerplate, but it's real good boilerplate. "Educational equity is based on justice in allocating resource, opportunity, treatment, etc." Those are good whys.
Okay. Ryan, did you want to contribute?
Oh, sorry, I, you broke up, I didn't hear you.
Oh, no problem.
No, I, I didn't want to, I wanted to observe the section.
Great.
And with six members present tonight, I think that, that summarizes that area of the compass.
Got it. Okay. Yes, thank you. All right, let's stay on the left-hand side and move down to the, the emotional or feeling quadrant. So we, we've talked about belief, and now we're gonna talk about what resonated with, with, with your emotional side. So again, anybody can go, same, same pattern.
I, I have a word or a sentence in PPS as well, first page. There is a statement there that says, "Race, race must cease to be a predictor of student achievement and success." Declarative statement, I related to it.
Thank you. I have one also from PPS. It's the last, starts the last paragraph on the first page. "The responsibility for the disparities among our young people rests with adults, not the children."
And Kristen put an asterisk on that because that was what I was gonna say.
Okay.
And I have to admit that I approached this a little differently, so I didn't find it in this section because I was, I was sort of like, does the text, you, convey this, not how I responded to it? So I didn't have anything.
So, so can I raise a kind of a similar comment? I didn't approach it the same way, but, but when you're talking about emotional quadrant, it can be positive emotion, it can also be a concern or a negative, okay? So I'm gonna, so I'm gonna, when I read the, darn it, I don't, it says Greg Baker is the superintendent. Which, which, I just printed these off, what is that from? It's one page, it's one?
Is that Bellingham?
It might be, it's one page with a one and a two on the front, that's all it's got. And here's my, my reaction, is that it, it is all about the superintendent policy. And my emotional reaction was, no, it's not. It's about the superintendent, and the board, and the staff, and the kid. My emotional concern is, is that we, we, in trying to do good, we take on and identify a responsibility level that isn't, in my mind, balanced. So, so I, I just, it was a red flag saying, if it's all about, if the race and equity is all about the superintendent, it, it doesn't fit for me, so.
Well, I, I'm gonna jump on Jay's then, and, and quickly do my homework. I did write at the top of that one, negative, in big letters, because that whole one, the way it's wording, worded is, "You shall not fail to do this, you shall not fail to do that." Instead of, "You, we will do this thing." And so, really, I didn't like it because it was so negative.
Are they a policy board, Vince, do you know?
I mean, it sure looks like it based on.
It looks like it, right?
It looks like the, the policy.
Yeah, St. Louis has policies like this too. There's a, there's a program, Big P, Big B, Policy Board, where they, all of their policies are, the superintendent shall not fail to do X. It's all, it sounds like what, that's what they're doing.
Yeah, that one, that one stood out to me for the reasons that Sarah and Jay said too. I didn't even look at it, it's super.
Yeah.
The Baltimore one for me, then tire on page two, under A1, all of the A1s, I feel like, is emotional work because it's about providing learning experiences for staff to build personal, professional, and organizational capacity on understanding the impact of race on educational equity and equality. And it's saying all the things the staff will do, and understanding your own identity, understanding root causes of systems of oppression and equities is very emotional. Either, if it's reaffirming experiences, or if it's learning something new, it's emotional work.
You can asterisk that one too, I nailed that for feeling as well.
So, since Kristen's gonna let me play. I had done my homework, and the, and the funny thing is, is in that Bellingham policy, there is one that, that filled my cup, and it was the last one. "Recognizing the value of the funds of knowledge that students and families bring to each classroom, school, and our system as a whole." And that just, just really spoke to me, and it's, it's 2G. So I, I agree with Lou and Jay about kind of the beginning of it, but, but that's a great, great summary at the end.
Great. Did we miss anybody? There we go, okay. All right, we're gonna shift to the right side of the compass. This is your intellectual, your thinking quadrant. You're, you're comfortable here, and it's hard to get out of it. We gotta push ourselves out, not all like me. But, all right, so, so what made you think? What put you in, in a contemplative spot?
I'll go, what is this, it's in the page four of Baltimore. Honestly, it's everything under 3A1, or 3A123. So, in 3A123, it, it's, it's, it's where there is a commitment for, oh, sorry, I should read it. I don't want to read it all, but basically disrupting and eliminating systemic inequities. And it talks about providing learning experiences for staff to build personal, professional, and organizational capacity on understanding the importance of race on educational equity and inequity. So it talks about supporting staff on, on this work.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'll go, but I'm not sure if I quite interpreted intellectual as, how did you describe it? Made me.
Contemplative, you don't have.
Contemplative?
Contemplative, Teresa, it's okay.
Okay, good.
I'm not assigned.
I mean, I, that's not like usually a. I mean, I, that's not like usually a challenge, I mean, not, it's not a challenge, I mean, often my problem is that I spend too much time in that stage. But anyway, I, so I found one that was kind of pragmatic, that I thought was really, that stood out to me. And it was under D, um, building staff capacity for equity-based teaching and leading. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, on Baltimore. Baltimore, yeah, I think it's on page four. Uh, it's number four, purchasing and procurement practices provide access and economic opportunities within communities represented by students of color.
I'll stay in, um, Baltimore too. This will be the Baltimore page section.
Yes.
I was looking at the, um, E2 on page, um, three, where it says specialized programming and support models will create opportunities for historically oppressed learners to thrive in academic programs.
Thank you.
So again, because I approached this a little differently, I sort of looked at it as, like, these are the things we know, these are the things we believe and feel, and these are the things we're going to do. And so I'm a little off on this quadrant.
It's multiple perspectives.
So they were, yeah, if we want to stay in Baltimore, you know, in my thinking that, like, these are the things we know. At the beginning, when they, that the, we acknowledged that historical generational compound in reality of systemic structures and practices have intentionally created and continued to afford advantage to some groups while perpetuating racial inequities to the other. So these are, like, this was, to me, it was like, these are the things we know, these are the things we believe, and so this is what we're gonna do, is sort of how that was structured in my mind. But if I sort of then quickly shift to what other people are kind of mentioning, I don't have a specific citation from the policies, but one of the things that kind of made me think was that several of the policies talked very specifically about assigning resources in a way to support their equity work. And I know that that's always been a, um, sort of matter of contention, um, in community, when you talk about equity work and you're this sort of ends up sort of pitting us against them for resources. And so that really had me thinking about how we can take this real need, and I think it's important to state this, like, we're gonna put resources behind this work. But how do we do it in a way that brings in a community who might be resisting it to start with? So that was, that was sort of my, that was a piece that kind of got me thinking a lot as I was reading these.
Right, yeah, there might be a data piece there that would could be convincing. And I know that your board has had this conversation before, I remember this a couple of years ago.
Can I double dip with, uh, with one, one idea?
Yeah.
Um, page five on Bellevue, so I'm gonna change it up with Bellevue, and if you go to, uh, paragraph three A2, numer, uh, Roman three A2, there's a paragraph that says, the district should consider other relevant research and data-supported measures, qualitative or quantitative, that may be closer to classroom teaching and learning and should include those as they are identified.
Great.
I have one from Bellevue as well.
Okay.
So I think it's page three, but it's section two, paragraph three. And the tone of the, it's talking about, it's characterizing kids with, and inequities. And I think it's a, it takes a deficit-based approach and smacks of, um, assimilationism. And it couches intervention as addressing deficits of children rather than seeing the system as not meeting the needs of children.
Where is that, Vince?
It is on page three, section two. Third paragraph reads as, we recognize students face inequities that are associated with the aspects of their identities, their context, including race, ethnicity, culture, disability, learning differences, gender, gender and blah, 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 you get all the factors. We are committed to addressing these inequities and helping each and every student equitably access learning opportunities. It's just the way the, the phrasing is, it's just smacks a little bit wrong. I get what you're trying to say, but it's not quite right.
Tell me again, what's wrong? I, I was, I was trying to find it.
It, it places the, the deficit on the child, not on the system. The prob, the problem with education outcomes are not with children, it's with how the, the system serves children. And I don't know, it maybe it doesn't fit in the intellectual, it certainly made me think, maybe it fits over in the moral quadrant.
It fits if you say it fits. You know, if it made you think that it fits. All right, who hasn't gone yet?
Mine, I want to spin right in behind there on Bellevue page five. My intellectual part says policies are great, but they're meaningless if you don't make them come alive and are accountable. So I just, the context of putting in accountability makes great sense. And we can talk more about that down in the ex, next quadrant, but I like that whole section.
Great. I think I'm the last one, and what I, the intellectual piece for me was, um, and PPS in the second paragraph, where it talks about recognizing that there are other student groups that have not reached their academic potential. This policy focuses on the most historically persistent achievement gap.
On the most what achievement gap, what was the?
Historic.
Historic?
Yeah, um, yeah, the, his, most historically persistent.
Historically persistent, thank you.
So for clarification, Ryan, is that saying race?
It is saying race. And I, and I just, um, yes, I guess I don't want to editorialize it, but yeah, that's what it's talking about.
And in PPS, that's definitely, I mean, that, that's their context. Okay, anybody else hasn't gone? I forgot everybody. Okay, now the acting. What made you think about what there is to do? Go ahead, Vince.
So it's, uh, PPS, page two, top of the page, and it's just one sentence, but I want to edit it a little bit. Uh, it says Portland Public Schools will, will significantly and continuously improve its practices.
Okay, and you want to edit it, so I'm not writing anything yet.
In order to, to achieve and maintain racial equity in education.
Okay.
Um, finish typing.
And I'm just paraphrasing right now, what I'm gonna do is go back and find these actual sections. And, um, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a bunch of stuff together for you. So as you see it right now, is not how it's gonna be.
Yeah, mine, that was, one of my favorite was the first pair, the first part of the third paragraph of Baltimore City, where it says, rather than continuing to perpetuate and contribute to the institutional racism, Baltimore City Schools must move to disrupt and dismantle it in every area of our work. Um, yeah, I, I felt like that part of the Baltimore one was taking responsibility. And, yeah, that's sort of, we're from, we talked about earlier.
Very good. Thank you. What page was that, Sarah? Sorry. Oh, you're muted.
Third paragraph of the first page.
Okay. Okay.
That's on Baltimore, Sarah. I, I like their, I kind of like their stuff. Um, I like their, I think their racial equity C on that same page, um, Kristen, uh, TC is kind of something that we've discussed with our own policies, our own goals about, um, about how people's, um, I'm sorry, I'm told you, I haven't, it's horrible, um. The disclaimer that's on all our board goals, that I'm always like, shouldn't it say, should not, no, it does not, because it actually does, and so, because of systems. I like how they wrote their racial equity line. Um, it says the result achieved when you can't predict advantage or disadvantage by race. And that's specific to racial equity, but it reminded me a lot of the conversations we've had about that equity, um, lens that we're trying to use, because it's like, this is what the result looks like, not, this is what it is, or what we're striving to make sense.
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
For me, looking at Bellevue, page four, paragraph C. So maybe I'm nudging against what I thought we might be going towards. It, their, their first two sentences say it's the district wants to bridge inequities in all different ways, program, culture, system, for different groups, so it's not about race only. That's part one. And part two is that the practice, not just the policy, the practice will be followed through with this, um, para, on page five, paragraph, Roman numeral three A one and two, where we evaluate certain specifics. And that, that makes us not just say nice platitudes, but we get down to what is it we're really gonna hold ourselves to.
Thank you.
I have one out of, uh, I think it's Portland, Portland Public Schools on page two. Um, so, uh, it's, it's D, uh, the district shall remedy the practices, including assessment, excuse me, that lead to the over-representation of students of color in areas such as special education, discipline, and the under-representation in programs such as talented and gifted and advanced placement. And I wanted to pair that with B, because B says the district shall create multiple pathways to success in order to meet the needs of diverse students. And as I read that one, I thought those really, they, I think they work together, because they, this need to have a multiplicity of ways to measure student success, understand success, um, not be beholden to a single epistemology framework of knowledge, but to have ways to validate other ways of knowing and to accept those as valid. I felt like B and D, they went together, and so I, I didn't feel like I could totally separate them.
Thank you. Who's next?
I've got another one, Bellevue.
Wait, Vince, has everybody gone first?
Oh, has everybody gone?
Everybody has to go once, or anybody goes twice.
So one that I, um, that I liked, um, in terms of, um, in terms of acting was, um, staff uses a shared volume of research and vocabulary that strengthens and grounds diverse perspectives. And that was from Baltimore, three A2.
I'll go with Portland Public Schools, page two, paragraph one, where it starts saying, educational equity means raising the achievements of all students while, number one, narrowing the gaps between the lowest and highest performing students, and two, eliminating the ratio predictability and disproportionality of which students groups occupy the highest and lowest achievements uh, categories. And then goes on, the concept of educational equity, that might be another one. The concept of educational equity goes beyond formal equality, and they explain it. I think that defines the objectives. When, when are we on top of the hill, when we think that we achieved what we want?
Right. Wait, what is that? Okay, has everybody gone? Okay, Vince, what was your last one?
Okay, it's Bellevue, page four, the first paragraph. And it speaks to the experience of education. We are working to achieve inclusion in our schools such that all students and families have safe and equitable access, feel a deep sense of belonging, and experience a welcoming classroom and school community where instruction is strengths-based, aligned to or exceeds grade level and subject standards, and to the maximum extent possible, takes place with all grade level of subject peers, which gets technical there at the end, but I was really, I, yeah, ensuring we have kids, that we know we have kids of color that are performing academically, but have an adverse experience in school.
Okay.
Sorry, Vince, where was that again? I was.
That was Bellevue, page four, section B, first paragraph.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'm gonna do with these, I mean, this gives us a good idea, I feel like I saw Marcean taking notes, probably looking at those sections as well. And, um, and what I would like to do is, is, you know, give this back to you, the form that you can use, because you can't use it on this, although I will send this to you. Um, where we're really pulling out, what are these key pieces that you want included? Because as we get to the next part, we're talking about what are the marching orders you can give staff as far as process and as far as the conditions that you want to see included in this. So I'm gonna stop sharing this, and I'm guessing that we can go back to the slideshow. We may have to, we don't want to keep you too long, we may have to shave off a little bit of what we were gonna do, but we want to make sure that we get through the proposed process, I think. And so, I don't know, Marcean, where do you want to?
I, I think, um, just in the interest of time, if we can jump to the proposed process, um, that will be amazing. And, um.
That in the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Yeah, slide 21.
Yep. There you go, Kristen, did you want to jump on this, or?
Um, why don't you go ahead, because I want to make sure that you get what you need out of this.
Sure, yeah. Um, so I think the exercise was just so fruitful, so Kristen, thank you so much, it was, uh, uh, I, I read the policies as where, as well, and you all brought up very similar things that I saw in those, so thank you. Um, what, when Kristen and I talked about just kind of what the next steps are with racial equity policy, we thought about just a proposed process for the school board. And so this is what we are proposing, and again, we can have a conversation around, um, around any additional needs. Um, but the first is, you know, school board provides conditions to be included in the racial equity policy, and I think, um, those things that have, were articulated in the previous activity, I think will be really, really helpful. And the, um, the, and then again, we would be, um, let's see, let's see, um, yeah, and then, for example, collaboration, here's an example I think that you all are familiar with, but again, we would, um, you, since one of your goal, board goals is community engagement, then again, we would want to reach out to, uh, key stakeholders such as our district equity leadership team advisory board, our students advocating for equity. And another example is our, we have a racial equity rapid development team, so that might be the board's stance is, we, you know, we want to make sure that we go out to these groups to get their multiple perspectives about, around the racial equity policy. Next, a draft policy is developed by staff and shared with the superintendent and then presented to the school board. And then lastly, the school board adopts policy in accordance with board policy BFC. And so I think what would be helpful for, um, for me is to know, just to kind of have a conversation around, what are those key elements that the board really wants included in the racial equity policy? Um, you know, to what extent is the, is, is the board wanting to get involved in the community engagement piece? And then are there any other parameters that the board sees as, as, um, something that we need to consider as we, um, move forward in next steps with the racial equity policy? And again, the timeline, um, we can talk about that as well, so just wanting to open it up for conversation. Kristen, was there anything else you wanted to add to that, or Ryan, or?
I think that's great. I think, you know, as, as Marcian and I talked about this, because next session is our, is our last one in this project, doesn't mean yet. There's urgency behind this work, too. That, that if, if staff can go away from this meeting, knowing that the, that there's a plan for development of this and the big ideas that the board wants behind this, then they can do their work efficiently. And so as you, as we talk about this, I'm, I'm gonna take some notes, too, about these big elements and, you know, the involvement of community and other groups, or how, how this goes. I mean, part of it will be constrained by how you have to adopt policy, but how it's developed. You know, the board, the board doesn't sit and write policy out of whole cloth. But, but you do get to say, like, you're gonna adopt it eventually. So giving as much information about those big ideas, and you just did a bunch of that, that you want in there, and, and the values that you want reflected will really help as staff goes to write certain elements of this. Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Jay.
I guess I wanna jump in and ask, as we start down a path, do we ever stop and say, is this the right path, or do we have a new thought? And my new thought is that I like, going back over our educational equity policy, I like it. I also like elements of those other buildings, districts that have, quote, educational equity, but I don't think I see as much, I guess what I'm saying is, is that have we decided that our, that the racial equity policy should supplement or be within or a part of the educational equity? Because my recommendation, having struggled a little bit with this, is, is that it should, racial equity deserves focus, and it should be part of educational equity. And so in, in designing it or putting it together, I would recommend not having a separate piece, but a, a, moving it within. But I'm just, that's kind of a reaction, not really a good analysis.
My understanding was that was the plan, but I've not, but I, but I don't work there. So I don't need to.
I don't remember a concrete plan. So that, that's probably my problem. Sorry.
So as we started talking about that, this back in the fall, or late summer, in our first time together, we talked about the equity policy, but also the fact that it didn't really, our policy doesn't really emphasize or call out race within it. And so I'm, I'm in agreement that I think what we need to do is take the current policy, and we need to address race specifically in that equity policy. And so I, I believe that's where we're headed. And that's sort of the intention of tonight, was to really have conversations related to race, and also get a chance to look at some policies that are, provide some additional language, you know, that helps us to move this policy forward, and then to get some input and bring it back to you. So that's, that's where I, I, my vision is of where we're headed.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, so I think where we are right now, just to summarize, is we have this proposed process. Personally, I, I like it. It has the elements of where the board should be engaged and where the board is better off by authorizing the staff and superintendent to engage the community in, in the best way. So number one, I like the process. Number two, on the first step, the parameters and conditions, I do have one parameter I can think of, which is for folks who are considering developing this policy, the drawing board is as flexible as you need it. Don't be constrained by the current system or existing systems. I, don't assume that's where we have any constraints, except for, of course, the law. I, I think we, we want to empower our, our teams to be able to aspire, but be ambitious with the policy. And I think under that, or maybe another element or dimension, is as you, as we think about racial equity, which is, in my understanding, putting resources where they are most needed to address the racial equity gap. I wanted to also think about racial justice, which is reconstructing, and maybe building new systems in place that are more racially just. So it's not only about the resources, but also we want to address systems that are built or rebuilt, whenever that's appropriate. So we need to address both equity and justice.
Thanks, Samuel. Something I was gonna say, too, is, is including a systems approach. Because it's, it's one thing to have like the individual development and understandings, which will help shift systems, but like using a systems approach with a policy could be super helpful. It helps, help us and help everyone understand like how embedded inequities are systematically when it comes to racial equity. I had another one. I'll come back to it, though.
The question for me is, so Kristin and Marcian are coming back February 4, which is about a month from now. And so in terms of the proposed process, I do sort of want to think about, as a team, do we feel like we have time to meet with each of these groups before coming back on February 4? Or do we come back with a draft, get board input, and then bring, take that out to those groups? I can see how each one of those would work, but the timeline for me feels a little tight to really make sure that we get authentic feedback. So I would, just looking at the proposed processes right now, knowing that timeline, I think that I would, I would prefer the time and intention to be able to have, come back to you with some additional language, knowing that you're very thoughtful and have some really great ideas that we wanna make sure are incorporated, and then take it out.
I like that, too, Ryan. And one of the reasons I like it is because I feel like Marcian and Kristen have a really good understanding of the needs of the stakeholder groups that are listed, and have, have done some great work with them already, and kind of may know a direction that they would like to see to propose to them after house input. And I'm not trying to make assumptions that you're speaking for all these groups, but I think that you kind of have a pulse on them.
That probably helps the timeline a lot. I'm just thinking of Marcian and all these groups she put down. I'm like, oh, dear. That's great. Thank you, Ryan.
Starting to display a little.
Yeah. Jay?
My comment or question goes to, it's around this accountability measurement thing. And, and this board has done a lot of work around metrics, and we took with Medford a stab at, you know, some big policy metrics and so on. And I don't think we've gone there, frankly, but you, Ryan, have. You, you, you have asked your principals to look at some things like, how close are these people to graduation? And you've done some digging. And my question would be, do you, as a superintendent leader, want the board to give metrics or not? Because you're aware of, of the need to put your money where your mouth is, demonstrate graduation rates or whatever. But I don't think our policy today spells it out, and I'm not sure whether we want the, if I were a person of color, would I want those metrics to say, doggone it, you guys keep talking? I wanna see some concrete metrics. And what would they want? So I, I'm listening for your advice and what the, the, the people of color or, or other people would want in the way of commitment or metric enforcement in a policy.
So what I can share about that is that I don't necessarily know that that fits within policy, but where I do think it fits is within those board goals and my, my goals that I'm evaluated on. And I think that as we think about those board goals, we are segregating data for student groups academically. We're looking at hiring and retaining staff of color. So there are a number of places where our equity work is built in to those board goals that inform my work and the SIPs that our principals brought forward. So I, I do see a pretty clear through line right now.
And therefore, therefore not needing to be written in policy.
No, because it's dynamic, too.
You did, and, and as, as, this policy is a little bit different than other policies, but there is a resistance generally in policy to get too specific, because then the only way that can change is if the board keeps re-adopting. And I know that, like, the point of this is to be specific in certain ways, but probably the metrics piece, which, which can keep changing.
My comment would be, we spent a lot of time training around some people from far away talking about some specific metric, you know, policies, and we did not buy it. And so I'm, I'm just wanting to be clear that, that, meaning, I, I'm not saying wrong or right, we just, we didn't. So I'm, I'm happy to, as long as we keep Ryan around and he keeps building the metrics, I'm fine.
That's the plan.
I remember, I remembered what the other thing was, is just around being straightforward and clear with things. I think that would be great, because sometimes I feel like things can get danced around, and especially when it comes to racial equity and in anti-racist work, sometimes things are not named specifically. So if it's, if it needs to be said, I would hope that it's said and not like a roundabout way, because that's part of doing the work and what we would hope, well, at least what I would hope with, I would see in a racial equity policy is that it's very direct with the way that words are used.
And I think from that training that we participated in with CRSS, I think that, I think I do see this as a transformational policy, though. So I see that this is one of those policies like DA, there's, there's a few of our policies, and you've heard me say this before, but there are a few of our policies that really are transformational and really inform our work. And I see this as a policy that has done that and will continue to do that.
Sarah? Yeah, I mean, as we're talking about things that we want to have included in the policy, one of the things that I've really felt was strong in the Baltimore city policy was the start of it, where it really called out that, you know, there were, there are historical systems that have been built that have disadvantaged, you created these inequities in our society, and that it is our responsibility as a school district. You claim we have these goals and values to work to dismantle those systems and build systems that work for all of our students. And so I really liked having that, that sort of beginning, that's the why. Like, this is what we know, this is what we believe, and this is how we're gonna do it. And I think for our community, having that really laid out and clear is really important.
Start with why?
There was somewhere, I can't remember which policy it was, where it was, like everything Sarah said, yeah. And then also, there was somewhere in one of the policies, I can't remember which one, where it said that it's not the responsibility of the students to make sure that the inequities are no longer there. And so I think that that was really powerful. I can't even remember which one it was in, but.
That's the one that I, I put up on the, so it's on our, it's on our.
Okay.
The post thing, because I, I named that one. I think it was Baltimore, but I, I don't know. Now I can't remember, because they're all running together in my head.
Well, there was three that started with B. But one of the ones that started with B, we didn't really like that much, so.
Yeah. It, it, it wasn't, I didn't, it wasn't Bellevue or Bellingham, because I didn't pull anything from either of those.
So Baltimore. Thanks, Tari.
It's on there. It's on one of the, it's on one of the little post-its that we made on that.
Yep. Okay. And Vince, your hands up?
So yeah, just dovetailing on the conversation that's, that was just happening. I, I agree that, that the beginning of the policy should have a clear statement of value. You know, as I was going through these, I found, found myself moving towards thinking about them in the terms of the golden circle and the, the why and how and the what. So I think we need to open with that. And I think that there, that's a really good contrast. And the, the policies that you selected, some really state, Portland Public Schools is a good example, where they clearly stated their why right in the beginning, and then restated it periodically throughout the policy. I'd love to see us replicate that. And then there are, there are others, kind of ours is an example, so is Lebanon, where we don't really talk about our values. And I would take it even a step further is, I think we need to state why racial justice is important. Why is equity important? Well, I mean, we need to bolt this into the bedrock of what we're trying to do. And I think Sammy alluded to it earlier. It's about what happened yesterday. The reality is that in America, we're trying to build a nation of diverse people that ensures that everyone has opportunity and justice. And that's something that has never been done on, in the history of humanity. If we think about that, there's always been, you know, despotism, monarchy, strong men, right up until today, right up until now. And then what we're trying to build is something completely novel in human experience. So I think we need to have some language about that, that what are we trying to do with this policy? So yeah, clear statement of values, and then, you know, should set clear expectations for the, you know, overall and ongoing outcomes. That's stated in myriad of different ways in all these policies, but we pulled some of that out. And then, you know, in broad terms, how we expect the district to go about its work. And I pulled out, you know, using not a deficit-based model, but going from a strengths-based, assuming diversity is a strength that we want to cultivate, and really avoiding assimilationism. And then there's, there were a couple places where districts chose to provide some context or history, and not in a lot of detail, but talking about the history of racial justice or injustice in the United States as kind of the grounds for why we're doing this.
Great. Thank you. Sarah, did you have something else?
Oh, yeah, I forgot to put down my hand, but I do. Yeah, so and I also mentioned how important I think it is to really call out very clearly that this is something we believe in, that we are going to put resources behind. And that allocation of, of our resources will be done with this policy in mind, because I think that's something that is kind of controversial, controversial in some of our community, and so I think we just need to say it.
I was muted. Thank you. I think, I think this gives, I mean, Marcian, I'll, I'll defer to you on this, but does this give you some good information to get?
This is gold. This is gold. Yeah, I took a lot of notes. Thank you.
Me, too. We will, we will get together and compare our notes and start compiling. I think, I think we wanna let you go soon. So is there anything else that we wanted to cover? Marcian, I will leave that to you.
No, I, I think this, this, the information you shared is, it really gives us our marching orders moving forward. It's really, really helpful. Thank you for this time to be able to listen in to what the board is thinking. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. I have one thing to say, but also Vince, you had your hand up.
Well, two things. I wanted to express appreciation for the fun, although voluminous homework assignment, because it was a really good exercise. I really appreciated it. But also there, there briefly was a question about the role of the board in hearing from stakeholders. And I'm wondering what opportunity is there? I know for me personally, I would like to be very much involved in that. So I will just put that out there. Is that, I'm sure, and I'm sure that all the other board members would love to be deeply involved. So just try to include us, I guess.
Awesome.
And I don't know, I mean, I also, I agree with Vince. I don't know if deeply involved is quite the right role in that, but you know, just to be able to hear what our different stakeholders are saying, because it's those things below the line that I don't know, that I think it's really important for me to be able to understand better. And so, you know, just to be able to. you know, just to be able to not even say anything in a meeting, but just be able to come and hear what is said, I think would be really valuable.
Yeah, and that's the role of the board.
Thank you.
Perfect. And Kristen, Marcy and Ryan, I think I would, what I want to follow up on that is feel empowered to have us as liaising or listening in as you see fit. I know there is strength into that. There's drawbacks into that. So the strength is we get up to date with what the community is saying. And maybe we can have, I'm thinking out loud, one board member attending one meeting and the other attends another, but the shadow of that is we're going to have different experiences than the whole board. Also another shadow or drawback I would caution from, if our existence, just our existence will help some people from speaking up or talking, because we want to acknowledge we are figures of authority that might not make people comfortable sharing, feel empowered to choose what you feel works best. So you tell us how we can be of support and help.
Good. Thank you. Okay, I think, I think I have some work to do next. Just good.
I'm excited. This is great. This is like a dream come true.
That's awesome. I have a question. I do have my PDF with so many highlights. Is that of any use or not really?
I, I think so. I, if, if any of you did this like electronically, like feel free to send them to us. I think that's really helpful. If you did it on paper and you want to scan them and send them to us, that's also good. I, I have stamps anymore or you could mail them.
So any means, sounds good. So any means of highlighting, you want to share it with Lynn, with Parker and our secretary and then they will forward it to, to Marcy Anne and Kristen.
Great.
Awesome. This is really good work. We're, we're doing good work and
You are.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership, board. I, you are filling my cup, not maybe for the whole year of 2021. Ryan, you want to say anything?
No, I think we know where we're headed and again, I appreciate your thoughts tonight and the facilitation of Marcy Anne and Kristen to continue to move this work forward. So I'm just excited to come back to you with a draft that we can again, spend some time working through and then take after the community.
Wonderful.
Thank you all.
Well, thanks. All right. Any last comments from Kristen or Marcy Anne or you're good?
I just want to thank the board for this time. It's an honor to be with you. So thank you.
The honor is ours. Truly, truly wonderful. Well, thank you so much. And for anyone who's listening in, thanks for joining us. Let us know if we missed anything. So you have the board email and reach out if you're a staff or a student, reach out to Marcy Anne because we want to hear from you. And if we're missing anything, we are your students here. So with that, we'll move for the next item on the agenda. We do not have any consolidated information for today. And the final point in the agenda before we adjourn is board member comments or future agenda topics. So any board member wish to propose a future agenda topic for discussion or deliberation or have comments that they want to offer. And with that.
I'm leaving you.
Have a wonderful evening. Good night.
You too.
I'll go with you, Kristen. Bye, everybody.
All right, we have Sarah first.
Yeah, so I felt like this, I have to apologize, there's a noisy 15-year-old in the next room now. So you may hear grunting or whatever noises he's making. I felt like this was a really important conversation to be having today because of what happened yesterday and how the visuals of that in contrast with the Black Lives Matter protests this summer, maybe impacting perceptions in our community and how our black students and other students of color may be feeling about how those, those terrorists were treated yesterday. So I think as we're trying to build a school system that reflects racial justice, I feel like we're doing this one little piece of the world for, for those students in that community, the community members who the impact of yesterday, which was huge on all of us, was even more profound for them. I also want to share that I just was listening to a podcast called White Picket Fences, which was about the impact of white women in politics and policymaking and the role we have often played in supporting the white men in power. Often at the expense of other populations whose experiences may actually closer to our own sometimes than, than those of the white men we're supporting. But it's, you know, it's a really interesting podcast. But one of the things, they were talking to a mayor about equity and policymaking. And she was talking about centering equity in her city's policy and how much resistance she got from the dominant culture because of that. And that it really took sticking to her guns and making good policy. And that the community eventually saw that, that good policy benefited everyone. And that attitudes were changed, not by convincing them ahead of time, but by making good policy. And then allowing the community to see the results. And I thought that was a really important message. Especially as we're working on this policy today. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Sarah. Lou?
My sentiments were very similar to Sarah's that the timing of having this discussion on the heels of everything that transpired is a little bit, it's like bringing a little bit of breath of freshness in because that's pretty heavy what happened. And I really encourage people to try to understand why some people were not surprised by both what happened and their lack of accountability that has transpired as well. And the reactions of community members that are often targeted and for protest and to learn about why people may not be surprised and why people may be feeling a different level of hurt at the moment. And because there's different levels of hurt going on by what happened. And I think that it's important. So people don't understand. I think it's a good opportunity to learn more and to understand that those feelings are very real and valid that are being experienced and to remember to practice all that self-care that you can and whatever that looks like to you and find moments of peace and love and gratitude in your life if you're able to. And I think it's important to not look away from what happened and to learn from it and to face it. But also to be able to pause and hit pause and turn off notifications on social media for a bit if that's what's needed. And that's okay. And people shouldn't feel guilty for that either. I know I didn't like watching anything all day yesterday because I was in meetings and I was like, I really have to stay focused for week one. And even though it was in the back of my mind, something was happening, but I was like, I can't right now. And you shouldn't feel guilty for doing things like that. And it's, it's not new and it's been ongoing. And I'm just really excited to be doing this work with the board and the district that'll help people understand what's going on and help change the trajectory of education in the local community. So people understand how not to respond like that.
Any other board members, Vince?
Yeah, I'm just following along. You know, I echo the things that have already been said that yesterday was shocking. And I think it really underscores that the importance of the work that we do. I think it was fitting that we took up this topic on this day right after the incident, but keep in mind that democracy doesn't just happen in Washington DC. I mean, pound for pound, democracy, there's way more democracy happening in school boards, on city councils, on county commissions, all over this country. So it just really underscores the importance of local governance and how that's conducted. And I just wanted to express my appreciation to be able to serve on this board and in this community that so deeply values civility that we just don't have tolerance for such shenanigans that we saw yesterday. Not acceptable at all. And so, and I know that it never would fly here. And so I just really appreciate all of you and the way that you hold yourselves and the way you conduct our business.
Thank you. Jay?
I'll tell you a story. So my grandson Will, who is about 13 today, called me and said, Dad, or Grandpa, what do you think about the incidents that are going on? Because he's at home, able to watch TV while he's not in school, blah, blah, blah. So it was a great opportunity to reflect on what, what message I would send to my grandchildren and to the community that I represent and to you. So I'm going to try to be as blunt and honest as I can. I was absolutely offended. I've been to the Capitol a lot. I view democracy, I value free speech, I value the right to peaceably protest. Those are just so ingrained in my heart. They're just fundamental. I'm older, but I walked in an anti-Vietnam War statement once. I stood outside of a clinic once and protested what was going on inside. It matters to me. Okay? I have a hard time with the letter that was signed or that Sammy forwarded because domestic violence in the name of a cause bothers me whether it's damage to a courthouse, shooting police, knocking down doors of representatives, things that are not peaceable protest. So I, I will not be signing that because I think that the letter is too narrow. Some of you would say, well, Jay, you're just not empathetic with enough, but I'm trying to empathize with the people who were there that did not do terrible things yesterday, but were protesting. And so my, my conveyance to you and my conveyance to my grandson is real clear, do not do the violence, do not do the disruption of democratic process. Martin Luther King is a hero of mine because of his passion for calling out the bad, but doing it in a peaceable way. So I just wanted to share why I won't be signing the letter, but I will. I asked Sammy where he was going to be sending it. I'll try to put together my own paragraphs that mirror a lot of what's in there, but do not reflect the fact that it's just this incident yesterday. So that's just where I wanted you to understand what I'm about.
Thanks for sharing, Jay. Any other board members wish to make a comment?
Hearing everything that was said and also shifting gears somewhat to just let you know that next week when we come together, we'll be bringing another update related to you know, school reopening and the, the changes that have been coming our way this week. The things I've been paying close attention to are related to vaccines and that vaccine rollout and where I can help and assist to make those vaccines available to our staff is priority number one for me. Also understanding that there'll be some additional access to testing potentially coming. And also recognizing that still continuing to learn more about what the changes mean based on the the letter from the governor to Colt Gill at ODE and Pat at OHA and the implications that has for us. So I'll continue to spend some time to this over the next several days, getting additional information and also knowing that on the 19th of January, the Safe Learner, Safe School Ready Learner Guidance will be updated. And so we'll have some additional information then too. So we're, we're sort of in a period of flux. And at the same time, I still believe that the plan we developed for K3 to come back into school is solid. And we'll just continue to bring more information to you as I have it.
Thanks, Ryan. And I just want to echo what you said. I, I want to say this publicly. I fully support your prioritization of our students' health and our educators' health. You've been steady and I have seen other entities, the districts across the nation go back and forth. But you want to prioritize certainty for our community. So thank you for doing that. And I know, I want to report also, I've been in a meeting with Governor Kate Brown and the epidemiologist and couple of leaders from the state with OSBA Board. And I'm optimistic, there is some work to be done and there is some coordination that needs to be done, but I am very optimistic. Vaccinations will ramp up in a much faster pace than what we see them right now. She's prioritizing educators and I hope that local coordination as well will make our district in a very good place because we have a good relationships with our partners here in the community. So good things are happening. And I know some of our community members are anticipating when we can get back to school. And we're working on that plan and it's a gradual plan. So I really appreciate all of this work and we, I look forward to see the updates next week based on all of these developments that are happening. Thanks. We have Vincent and Jay.
I was just going to express my appreciation and report to the board, you know, as you know, that I'm, I'm sitting in with, with the team that is developing, that has been developing the plan for reopening. And I just want to again, express appreciation. I'm going to say it tonight and I'll say it again next week. Just the, the tremendous collaborative work that has been unfolding between our, our leadership team and our teaching staff, building this plan to get our kids back in school, but doing it in a, in a way that is safe for, for everyone. And it's just really impressive. And we are in a good place compared to other districts. And that's because our district staff have been working so hard to make that happen. So thank you, Ryan. And thank you to the staff who've worked so hard to get us to where we're at. So we're ready when opportunity comes.
Jay?
I want to say thank you, Sammy, for your advocacy and sitting in and Vince for your work and Ryan. I really believe in the input we've been getting from our community about, come on, let's get us back into schools. But there's no way legally that we want to get involved with, with undermining or shooting below the standards. Because it just sets us up. I wish the standards will be adjusted, but I appreciate your leadership. We're doing the right thing. I just wish we had better standards. So thank you for your hard work.
All right. Any other comments? With that, I want to say just, I'm not going to say prayer, but contempla- a reflection. I think today is a better day than yesterday. It's a little bit better. I know the suffering, many communities are suffering more with COVID, but at least in this setting that we are in, today is a better day than yesterday. We're doing some work that hopefully will outlast us as school board members and maybe outlast our lives with the systemic change we're doing with the policies. And tomorrow will be a better day, but if we make it so. So it's a mandate on us that we continue to make, to take it one day at a time and take care of ourselves, just like what board members said, we need to take time to care, care about ourselves and if we can, people around us. And keep making it one, each day, we make it better than the one before. Therese?
Sammy, I love your optimism and I would much rather end on the note of optimism. I do just want to say that there are many people in our community for whom today is not better than yesterday. And I just want to make sure that we remember our responsibility to them. Not better in terms of COVID, not better in terms of watching the, the, I don't know what to describe. The actions of those in, in Washington yesterday. What I do know is that, that there are, those people are in our community as well. They are in the communities around us. And I am grateful that, that that demonstration of violence did not happen on our courthouse steps. But I think we would be naive if we don't think that that could happen. Because we are, I mean, there's a, there's a level of vitriol that drives these misbeliefs that allows them to continue to take root. And we were talking earlier in our, in our workshop time with, with Kristen about the theme of responsibility. And I just want to make sure that we, both as, as community leaders, but also as just neighbors. And I just want to make sure that we, both as, as community leaders, but also as just neighbors to the people around us, remember that, that some of us are going to sleep better today, but we need to make sure we're not sleeping better today at the expense of others that don't have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Therese. Wholeheartedly, I agree with you and thank you for, for saying that. With that, let's continue to speak up and let's continue to make sure we hold ourselves accountable and our leaders accountable. And thank you, everybody. Is there anything else for the good of the order? See none, we are a good one. You have a good night.